Since my last change mental health to our last paper, I have stayed on task to get support, to get new mental health for children and to have trauma counselors in all schools starting at the elementary school level. And from what I'm hearing and being told, there are efforts being made by school boards, city and county councils to move in that direction. Am I correct? I am looking forward to getting an update today about the Illinois Settlement Fund District. Tonight, I am here to talk about the second annual Mental Health Rally I have scheduled on April 28, 2024, from 2:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m. at the Gazeve of downtown Franklin. We are going to have many new speakers at the event with our keynote speaker being our very own North Carolina Department of Health and Children's Secretary, Toby Segley. Our focus this year is mental health and coping skills, including activities for the kids. I would like to set up signs around the council streets to advertise my event place as a politician. Do I need special permission for that? I would like for you all to come and support the event, as most of you did last year. Our organization, YS Kids, and myself published a book last year called Shattered: Lives Broken by Substance Abuse and How We Put the Pieces Back Together. And it includes my stories. The book is available on Amazon, and all proceeds go to YS Kids. Tonight, I would like to present a signed copy to you, can be, can become a part of a town project.
Shattered is a book of lives broken because of substance abuse and how they put the pieces back together. There's about 20 stories in there from all different walks of life. Some people from recovery, some people who have lost loved ones, and recent story of course, of all, of all. And all of them have relevant stories, so it can be published by YS Kids.
I want to thank all of you through, as well as our school board members and city councils for your continued support and for listening, and I hope to continue to work together for the future of us children and our community and state. You know I'm not going to go away, right? And lastly, I want to thank our law enforcement agencies, including Sheriff Holbrook and City Chief of Cleveland Pollin, for the corporate block and the very scary crime for us children several weeks ago when we got locked down.
Okay, one other thing.
So recently, I have won the award of Youth Citizenship Award here in Macon County for
hoping something might pop up in our email, and I know YS Kids, and I know you guys, and thank you.
Great job, man.
Thank you, Mr. Burt.
Mary Ann, can you use the microphone to speak to the client?
Yes, sir. This P E voice, I hardly even hear my voice. I was looking at our agenda and the new business, G. This is being considered. And I appreciate that you all have put this back on consideration. And I just, I know y'all know this, but I just want to remind you that a quarter of a cent is just a quarter. Put this in four pieces right here, and that's all that's being asked for. It's one little quarter of this penny. And it would take us $5 to get one penny more on our bill when we go to Walmart or anyplace else. So thank y'all so much for putting it back up, and I hope that we can get a chance to build on it again. And all of you who are being in support of it, thank you for your support the last time.
Good evening, gentlemen. Thank you so much for giving us this opportunity to speak with you. I am here for two things. One, to reiterate what Mary Ann said, 100%. In fact, I will help politics for you if you pass the referendum on the quarter cent tax. You tell me where you want that message out, and I will help you. I will work hard to make that happen so that we can get people who travel through here to also put money in Macon County, like it should have happened two years ago. The other thing I want to stress is how important this little sea of green behind me is, not just because St. Patrick's Day is coming up, but all these people in green shirts back here, they have a very important message for you. And I want to hope that you support them in what they're doing for this community. That's it? Sure, this is Scott Bates, the handsome one.
All it gets, five minutes.
Three's already gone, but why about one? We should have one minute.
Thank you, Mr. Burt, for the quarter cent sales tax. Please, 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 let's get this through this time.
Loud? Am I down that right?
Yeah.
The reason I came here tonight is about the roads in Macon County. And I talked to Josh about Georgia Road. It seems like it's not going to continue this way, so I thought I'd bring that up. On behalf of myself, I'm going to bring up some of the roads, especially these culverts they've put in. I need to get them aligned every few weeks, sort of a couple months. So if there's something that can be done to improve the roads, that would be very beneficial to everybody. It's about all that except for...
I think that's an issue that everybody in this county can agree with, so I want to say thanks for coming personally tonight. Let me get your contact information, and we'll send a free way email out to our state rep, or our local district rep, the D O G. This week, Will gets the grease.
Right. This is Jake Wilden at msn.com.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to first, if we could, under old business, after item 10A, before we discuss item 10B, I'd like to have a brief closed session.
Brief closed session?
Yes. Yes, right under 10A, before we discuss 10B, I need a brief closed session to preserve a certain time period. And if we could, after we discuss item 10B, we can add an item number 10B-1. And that's going to be reconciliation of changelors at the Macon Middle School locker room project. If we could also remove item 10B. We're going to, that would be another item we'll add to that March 25 meeting. We have completed the contract. We do have a contract that we think is going to work. We're just ironing out some minor details right now that are inconsequential. The C M A RIS working, the Hollins Project is currently working and we're not holding it up. We're waiting until the 25th to eat this, so that's not going to delay anything. But nonetheless, we need to remove item 10B. And we need to add one appointment to the N B C under, that's 13A. So instead of two seats, we need to, we're going to discuss that and start filling three seats on that economic bill for tonight. He and I, he and I are on the same page with that. That's Hollins. 10B is Hollins. We have the contract ready. We're just ironing out a couple minor details. And we were back and forth this afternoon, and I spoke to this contractor. We're going to postpone that until the 25th. It's not going to hold the project up. They're working on it. But to eat that document, we're actually going to do it on the 25th, so a few little things that they're treating. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, under new business of Lev and Jay, discussion regarding draft registration for me and Pollin to collect the Macon solid waste. This is the first that I've heard anything about this process. And I would like to pay you that until the future, to get a clear understanding of what's been promoted this for the Macon landfill and Pollin.
And I think the intent of tonight is to present it to the board for the first time. This is something that the Solid Waste is presenting tonight, or would be presented tonight, for the first time for informational purposes for the board only. It is intended to start that discussion process and to better inform the board on what the Solid Waste Department is thinking with this proposal. So that's what, it was purely meant tonight for informational purposes only and to begin the discussion for this board. So I don't know if that impacts... But that's fine. No action, no action.
There's just a lot of information provided, with fee schedule and everything else, so that's fine.
Make the motion really quick, the agenda. We discussed that again. Always talk a bit around here, always. We got all that changed, John. Now we go to the reports, brother Frank.
Franklin Garden Club.
Okay, there you go.
All the green shirts here.
That's the theme, okay. I run the town. I'm just part of the eight on between Franklin Garden Club and the town and the county. Hey, Sel King is our current president, and we have a few of our members there. So tonight, we're going to present, and I think you have a package, maybe some of those, and two things that we've learned. Two days, they're going to apply them for projects during the rest of the year.
Good evening. Thank you for letting us present to you guys tonight. So as Rhonda said, you guys have a package. But basically, we wanted to just remind you guys that the Franklin Garden Club has done some first-person experiences in Franklin since next year. And funded, which is a really great cause, and that does include both Rankin and Clock Tower Squares, which are owned by the Macon County out of rather than the town of Franklin. In 2023, we did partner with Minns Challenge, so we did have some assistance from them. But we did have 654 hours of volunteer time from our members that totaled $19,528.44, according to the East Coast Sector's volunteer valuation. So that's a lot of money that the Garden Club is saving the county in maintaining those two squares. Since July 2023, which is when this four-year started, some of the things that we've done just in those two squares are, of course, maintaining and adding new flowers and mulch. We also had the oak tree frame, which you guys might have forgotten to see happen a couple months ago. We replaced the transformer in Rankin Square that wasn't functioning properly, so we wanted to make sure our lights are coming on at night for safety. When we did replace that, we increased the water tonnage so that we can add additional lights later, and they will function properly. We also began decorating the gardens for the holidays. That might not seem like a big deal, but we have seen so many people coming into the gardens and using that as a portal to new users, which is a really great thing to promote our, not only to our, you know, locals as well as our viewers. So we stop and talk to them and find out what's being used by not just the people coming out of town, but also a lot of our own folks are coming in and we like to give them this regularity. We just recently replaced the Astro Turf and Clock Tower Square. That was a really big project that was just recently completed. We also installed expandable greenery, that fencing that expands around the clock tower and the arches. We used down underneath there for storage. We heard visitors comment about how ugly it was to see in the middle of these gardens all of our stored items. So that was a solution that we came up with and recently installed. We have also added concrete tables and benches to Clock Tower Square. And we've had numerous people comment about people using those already to have lunch and have a coffee break. We've also added concrete benches behind the monument in Rankin Square. We did find some original plans from parks and noticed that the benches were actually on the original plant. So that's something we're actually just completing, something that was intended all along. So those were just some of the big projects. That means that between July 1 of 2023 and this February, we've spent $13,490.83 in supplies in Clock Tower and Rankin Square. So that's a pretty good amount this past year. So the executive committee has met to determine 2024, 2025 priorities, which is really what we're here to talk with you guys tonight about. So one of them is to improve lighting in both of the squares. Anybody who's been down there at night knows that it can be really dark. One of the things we've done already is worked with Duke because we noticed that there were multiple street lights that weren't burned out. So those are getting replaced, the light bulbs are, and in some cases also the lights themselves. We also want to add more lights along the walkways, the pathways in the garden. We want to wrap some of the tree fairy lights and maybe use some disco lighting over where the concrete tables are. So it'll make it look pretty, give it ambiance, but it'll also add safety. So people, if they're using the gardens in the evening, they're going to feel a little bit more secure about walking in that area. We have some really nice giants, all metal park benches. They're $1,600 each. We're going to replace those, so the little ones that are metal ends with like plastic or fiberglass boards were really, really tricky. So that was one of Minns Challenge's projects, was to go through and tighten all the screws, replace bolts that were missing. Some of them, it looks shocking how many bolts are missing, and that no one had followed yet. But they're yellow, the slats are yellow, and they're really awful looking. So one of our projects this year, we've already talked with Job Corps about, is we'll provide the paint, and they're going to come in and paint them all black. So at least we can extend their life a few years. So that's one of the ways we're trying to stretch our dollars as much as possible, is to come up with solutions to extend life of items and do things as reasonably as we can. So now, so you have in your package pictures, they're going to be projected, and then Rhonda's also going to hand you some. When she passes them, they're numbered on the back. The first one you'll see is is pictures number one and two are of the two metal fences, or the metal fences around those squares. As you can see in the first picture, they are very rusty, and then they are also very discolored. So again, that's one that we've already asked Job Corps if they will come and paint them if we provide the paint. So that's something that we feel like will extend the life of the fence, but also make it look a lot nicer than it currently does. One of our projects this year that's going to be a big community event, because we really want our community to realize these are their gardens. These, you know, are the heart of Franklin, but they're also the heart of Macon County. And it's important for our, they're not just to be visitors, but that our community realizes these gardens are theirs to use. So we are going to be creating a kindness rock garden in Rankin Square. And that really came from, if any of you follow our Facebook page, we found a painted rock in the garden this past fall. And it reminded me of a rock garden in the neighborhood we lived in in South Carolina, where there was a corner and there was just a bunch of painted rocks and people, there was a basket of pre-painted rocks. People could take a rock, paint it, put it back, take a rock that they thought, you know, was just really cool. So that's just something that we thought would be a really fun way, especially get kids involved and using the gardens. And I had actually found, after we posted that, a rock in the clock tower that was clearly painted by a toddler and left for someone to find. So that was kind of a cool idea, and I think it will take off just having seen a couple of those things happening. And we'll have a big celebration in June for everybody in the community to open that garden, be in the gardens, using their rocks, and moving them to get it started. We talked already about starting to decorate the gardens year round. One of the things that we will be adding is on the pergola, which is always going to be decorated, a Franklin North Carolina sign, because we want, when people take pictures and post them all over social media, as everyone does, we want them to know where they were when they took that picture and hopefully help more people come and visit our gardens and our town. Pictures three and four, we have several trees. These are the, you know, the fall side trees that are in Rankin next to the old Macon News Building. They are really showing signs of stress. We did soil testing, consulted and worked with the extension office to find out if there was diseases. There is not, but they're just stressed. They're too tight in there. They, so we've also talked to, briefly talked to Josh beforehand to let him know we're working with Bob, who he knows from Modern Tree Services. And so he's been advising us, and the, between the co-op and Bob, we really feel like those are trees that are going to probably never come down. When they do, he will already have a plan in place to replace them with medical treatments that will kill in that area. So that's always going to be our goal, is to meet towards nature whenever possible. So that's always gonna be our goal, is to meet towards nature whenever possible. So picture number five, this is really hard to tell what you're looking at, but this is where especially Josh, we invite you to, uh, meet us over there with Bob. We spent a long time, uh, Bob and I did, looking at, um, how the roots from the big oak tree are pushing up the walkway. This is a really bad picture of the worst of it, but we thought about shaving the root, we thought about severing the root, but then the more we looked at it, that root system rose probably twenty feet out, um, between, you know, the two directions, and it's like the main cap. So if we, if we sever it, we're probably gonna lose the trees. So that's something we're gonna have to figure out how we're gonna deal with, and that's where Josh is, but also get your number there. Um, yeah, that'd be great, thank you. Um, so we are also planning on pressure brushing, didn't know that was a thing, but, um, evidently we can pressure brush the Astro Turf in Rankin Square, and that will help extend the life of that Astro Turf, which is massively expensive to replace. So again, we're trying all weekend to save money. Um, we'll be replacing, uh, mulch, flowers, plants as needed. Um, the big one though, that we really wanted to talk to you about tonight is the clock tower. Um, and Rhonda, you wanna put this in the picture, can you please? So we would like to repaint the clock tower, we've already talked to Job Corps, I, in fact, reconfirmed with them today that they are on board to repaint it once, um, the repairs are made, and we will be providing Job Corps any of the supplies they need to paint the project, so just even the way we're preparing for it. Um, but as you can see, um, the clock tower is in a lot of, uh, a need of a lot of repairs, um, including the roof and the fascia boards, which are, are really rotting. Um, so we know that, uh, July eleventh of 2023, we had some numbers from the Garden Club come and speak to the commissioners, um, and, and, um, bring it to your attention that it was starting to really have some need of repairs, and, um, at that point, um, Commissioner Higginson, you had mentioned appointing a point person, so I'm, I'm not sure if that's been done at this time. Um, so we would, you know, like to, if it hasn't, like to see that happen and figure out, you know, how we can make these repairs happen. Um, one of the things that we also did was went and talked to Robert Schur, um, the curator at the, uh, Historical Museum, just to make sure there were no restrictions and, um, parks, so that it is obviously the level that's on the original clock tower, but does have some original parts as well. Um, and he said there are no restrictions, he just asked that we, uh, continue to use the current core bells, and offered, um, a pattern that they keep in the museum that should be used to rebuild in the future. So we know that, that we can move forward with repairs with no restrictions there. Um, as Commissioner Higginson said last year, um, the, the clock tower is the center of Macon County. It, it is a representative of our county, and, and the date to me, you won that original clock tower that's on top of our courthouse. So it is something that we feel like is really important as the center of our county to, to get it repaired, get it painted, and, and just really have it be a showcase and symbol that it is of, um. Um, you can see in the last one, we also have a leak. We actually have the town of Franklin out there, like, two or three weeks ago, trying to figure out where all the water inside was coming from, and, because we now have prints on the inside too around the, the gates, so we knew it wasn't coming through the side, it's clearly coming through the roof. Um, we happened to be in there, um, after a heavy rain, and I'm like, I'm really just gone. So, um, so the, the roof is in, probably got some, some, uh, probably just full replacement. Um, so this is obviously an eyesore, unfortunately, but it's also a human safety issue because it's getting so many pieces that are rotting that, um, we feel like that it won't be too long before this stuff starts to, to, to blow off. So the goal of the, um, Franklin Garden Club has always been to maintain, but also to continue to maintain, and that's a focus that we're really, um, looking at with some of these maintenance issues, is we need to make sure that we're maintaining, but always moving forward with new things like the tables and, and benches and stuff. Um, Macon County has, uh, included twenty-five hundred dollars in the annual budget every year since two thousand and seven. Failure prices have gone up since two thousand and seven. Uh, we've had a lot more maintenance issues, and as you've seen, we've spent more than fourteen thousand just this year. So, um, we have come to respectfully ask that the, um, the, the commissioners approve five thousand this year in the budget to help kind of make sure that we can make these improvements efficiently, uh, to keep it up, both of those gardens, um, next year to go for visitors and, uh, the, thank you.
I will say, um, by their office, it's letting you do such a good job of the gardens, I didn't realize.
While we, Bob was up painting the clock tower, I mean, the oak tree, he went, oh my gosh, I said, I wish I would have remembered to have to take a cell phone to the other guy because this area is the only one that has this door. Which is a good thing. Yeah, yeah, we did notice when we found the leak at the, the top, there's plexiglass in the building, basically, it was leaking.
Leaks out of that, yes, for a couple of years, sure.
Yeah.
And I think it's every, it's that technology. And we appreciate it, as I mentioned, as I said, so I can't, when I go down there, I appreciate what y'all do in Rankin Square and the clock tower. If we had to pay that out to the private firm, or hire people to do it, twenty-five hundred dollars a year.
And having worked in my yard, John, as we speak, and I wish it was twenty-five hundred, it's, it's, it's amazing how expensive it is, yeah. But the clock tower, I know that it is a lot of money to think about doing, but we're now coming into probably some safety concerns, and I just think that kind of changes it.
Let me know quickly, uh, what are your sources of income?
So we do get, um, some money from the town, that goes, they, they also help, um, you know, with some of the stuff in the, in the, uh, two squares, even though it's not theirs, they wanna make sure it's getting ice, so we appreciate that, but then we also get there to other areas for the town as well. Um, and then we have our mail plant sale, which is May eleventh, that is our every year. Um, and that's pretty much it, um, so we may be looking at some, um, what was that under donations? Donations, yeah, membership dues, we pay annually, but we'll also, um, if, if our, our costs continue to be at this level, we're gonna have to be looking at some.
And you just took all the town, the town hall down there, y'all were hanging back down.
In front of town hall?
Yes.
We don't maintain it, we, we plant it and then, um, they keep it up, um, GJ keeps it up the rest of the summer. Um, but then, uh, that, that drainage area coming into downtown, um, Allen's Road area, that actually, we just took that on, it's on access, that doesn't belong to them either, that's the state, but again, we wanna see it look nice because it was just looking so latty. So, um, we're putting planters down Main Street, um, this year, the oak planters is on the, on the agenda as well. I know that's not in the squares, but anything that makes that downtown area look good, um, can be, or can be. Yeah, the two entrance signs for, uh, Welcome to Franklin have been added, I, I, we, we agree to that. So our members, as a whole, don't know yet, we're taking on another challenge, so.
Your side. Your side, the street looks good. There's, there's four lots down there in the center of the main camp. You see those four?
Right, right.
Those are terribly neglected, um.
We have to have some funds if, if we have to take that in.
Well, and I appreciate y'all incorporating team challenge, that's brilliant, I mean, I'm glad, and I've been down there whenever work, and I'm one shoe lady, but, the center main camp, you know, and I was hoping last year that we could come together with plans and roofs, and, even on our side, those roofs are looking up the sidewalks and safety hazards, and some of those trees on this side of the square is gonna have to be addressed, and I hope to have a plan to present to you ladies tonight, that, that happened, but we need to, I appreciate what y'all are doing to those two spots down there, we need to expand that, to take care of those four corners, I mean, I just can't, it frustrates me that we just can't get it together and take care of it. Thank y'all for what you do, and, uh, it's just frustrating, we talked about this earlier and, you ladies, I watch y'all work, and it's lit, lit, tears, but, uh, uh, as far as, I mean, twenty-five hundred dollars, what you ladies do is, is, I have no problem making a motion to grant your request for five thousand, but that's still, but what you all do, the magnitude of work that y'all do, you're out having to raise the money to do it, to take care of, take care of property, what do you guys think, I mean?
I think, I don't have a problem, I think we're in the budget process now, we're all working it, I'm not sure I'm, I'm ready to settle.
Well, I'll be submitting our, our proposal to go through, um, the email, so I'll, I'll be sending that in, so.
As part of the upcoming budget request.
Yeah.
And you spent fourteen thousand dollars just for materials, and you're asking for five, plus are your labor?
What, what can we ask for donations?
Um, we really haven't done a lot of donations, it's mostly been county, town, and then, um, we, what was it, twenty-sixth fundraise from the plant sale? Does that sound right?
Yeah, last year.
Last year for the fundraiser, yeah, and then, um, right now, we have membership of, I think we, our quarter people are not back yet, so I think we're about twenty-eight right now. Um, and, uh, so one of the things we are looking at, and another option to raise money, is to offer, um, membership that we do for people who are not going to be active members, kind of like a, a support membership with people. So I kind of look at the green light, guys, you know, they have, that's why I got an idea, they have a lot of members that I know aren't all down there necessarily working, but that money is helping to maintain. So we're, we're looking at how you guys also are going to make some additional payments.
Can you be able to shift, my love, to you?
Currently twenty, it's gonna probably have to go up a little bit, and that's been twenty-five, twenty-two, that will probably be, be, but. They get it, they get a shirt, and I just found out our shirts are fifteen dollars, so. I sold here too, a membership, so.
You're charging for the membership to take care of the county for all of this?
Yeah, yeah.
My question about the clock tower is, uh, how did that rotten clock tower become your issue to take care of the garden?
Because it's in the middle of the garden.
Well, I mean, how, I mean, but that, is that not out of your scope of what you like?
Well, we don't, we, we can't repair that, no.
I understand, I understand, that's what I, that's the point that I'm trying to make. That clock tower, uh, with the root leak and everything else, and the trim pieces of the fascia board, uh, it's some rock to the ground?
Yeah.
This is not something that we can play around with, you either fix the clock tower, not you personally, or we lose it.
Right.
And Commissioner Hickon and I walked through the whole place, and we've identified all the issues, um, and the recommendation was, well, the Job Corps came on board, the question is, is why aren't we incorporating the high school carpenter class to help make these repairs? And, uh, as someone that's basically grown up in Highland, we see a need for community comes together. Well, we are a county of buildings on track. Why we can't go outside of the tax base, and yet volunteers like you ladies take an absolutely beautiful job every day, there's no question with y'all that y'all do, but just like Commissioner Hickon said, looking across the street at what we're facing, a life expectancy of street scale. All these trees and these planters have, and they've outlived their life expectancy. If you go down all the sidewalks, the picture you showed of the, uh, the brick papers that where they're cracking because of the root structure, that's happening all over this county. But we are better than this, to stop allowing our county to fall apart. And how do we get there? But I, I think, you know, we have people that, building contractors, we have people that are financially secure, we have people that are not financially secure. So how do we, as a county, get people to volunteer to take care of some of the issues without depending on tax collection to do this work? Just like your volunteer, you show exactly how many hours that you volunteered, the work that you did, what it saves the taxpayers of Macon County, beautiful job. How do we address and get the rest of it through? And for God's sake, let's get this clock tower rebuilt by someone in this, uh, I mean, if, we have a maintenance department, the maintenance department is, are they not capable of?
Well, I mean, yeah, I mean, sure, but you gotta understand, you know, we've got about four hundred thousand square feet of buildings on hundreds of acres, and each one of those buildings, I mean, you're talking about, uh, seventy-something HVAC units that have maintenance, and a building like the town of Franklin, you know, we talked about working with them, and we worked with the town of Franklin, like, for instance, the sewer line that serves LBJ, um, town collect revenue on that sewer line, but, you know, if that sewer line needs repaired, we have to go out and repair that sewer line, sometimes that ties up four or five people for days on that job, so we're used to working with the town on things like that, and it's just a matter of prioritization, and the time for these things to be included is in the budget process, certainly, like Commissioner Shields alluded to, we had our budget kickoff retreat, and I don't recall clock tower being mentioned. I mean, if the commissioner, uh, if this board wants to include it in the budget, we wouldn't have to put it in the budget, we'll fix the clock tower, um, if that's what the desire of this board is, but it's important, like, during this budget process, and that was the purpose of our budget kickoff, you know, is to set these priorities about this project, because, you know, the immediate priority of maintenance, and, you know, and this, this project is identified and, and maintenance wants to do it, and, and the board, maintenance, maintenance to do it, they can certainly do it, and I'm just saying, with the, the amount of space that they maintain in, in all of the county facilities and, and vast areas that we do maintain, have to take care of, everyone, uh, just being one of them, it just has to be prioritized, so if that's, if this is what, uh, a priority for the board to be put in the budget, we certainly put it.
Commissioner Serra, can I take you back up to something, see, we have, uh, we're working with jobs, like you said, we also have roofing companies, we did approve, get approval from the, that roof does not have to be stained, it could be metal, why couldn't we get one of the roofing companies to donate, get a color green, for example, that's the most common metal roof that there is. I'm sure they didn't have enough, and I don't have any, any, any people we're talking about, but they could donate to the children, they could even donate to labor, to, to, right, it's not our responsibility, but we're the ones that listen to it and see it, and, you know, uh, LBJ, so then paint it. So why couldn't we approach the community, oh, not we, why couldn't you folks approach the community and say, look, we need this done, and see what you get, with no cost to pay?
I think it's, we're planning to see, I think it's happening right now, I see schools, calling that girl, she, uh, you said, Franklin friends, both were counseling people, you know, media people that are, that this is going to get violent, and then it goes on social media and things like that, I think we're planning to see, I think there's house people who are gonna come in and, and volunteer, and I believe, you know, in their heads, some interest, or something.
Well, but, but go ahead, Josh.
Let me say, let me say one thing, uh, two things I wanna bring up, and this is off topic, but, club dues and membership dues, if you pay, hey, to go out here and work for us, I mean, we're talking about a lot of stuff right here, but I can't, I mean, membership dues and clubs, you know, so listen, we're, we're gonna help you, all right? I see our CTE director right back there, that right there is our school board, and we have a warrant department, department, there are people that want to help, we just
I see our CTE director right back there, that right there is our school board, and we have a warrant department, we have a department, there are people that want to help, we just got to do their job, don't worry.
Well, we, we, down, Shirley talks to people down there, these, well, we've got donated wood to build planters all up and down Main Street, it doesn't cost us a penny.
But, going back, I, I don't want to make it sound like I'm pointing fingers at the things that are, if they're not asking to do it, they don't, they don't know...
Like you said, it's priorities, you have to...
You don't ask a building contractor or a supply company for donations, they have no idea. And, um, and so, I just like, um, I'm very impatient when it comes to stuff like this, I understand the government process and everything else, but this structure right here didn't get this way over the top, okay? So, um, I guess as a community effort, and a board effort, and maybe we should identify these problems and, and introduce them to the general public to make move forward.
Well, and I think that what we are pushed for, really getting the community to understand these are all our gardens, is, is a part of that. Um, you know, these things was like, "Yeah, we'll give you the wood, that's fine, you have seconds," and, um, this is a really small one, but we, I put out a Facebook request on our, you know, like, hundred followers, um, we needed pots to dig up some stuff for the plant sale. I put out in the afternoon, and I said, "Drop off tomorrow afternoon, I have equipment next afternoon, please stop bringing pots," because we had so many people drop off pots. So, I think if we really ask and get them to understand, you know, we're doing things to these areas so that they can enjoy them, um, that, that people will step up and say, "Yeah, I want to be part of that."
Oh, I was just saying, you're, you're just, yeah, y'all stop paying the work for us.
But...
But thank you, thank you all for what you're doing.
Yeah, just one more thing, uh, has anyone approached the businesses on Main Street after donation?
Yes, so, one of the things we're doing is because the planters will sit outside the merchants, um, there's some of those small concrete planters that are kind of trip houses, um, we've asked them, you know, given them their little sheet, telling them what we want to do with the planters that'll be planted year-round, and asked if they would donate those concrete planters because they own them. Um, maybe not the current merchant, but a merchant in there bought them at one point, and we've had good response so far, yes, absolutely, take them, so we can put them in the plant sale and help, you know, offset some of those costs. So, we're doing everything we can to try to help, um, stretch the dollars.
Thank you.
I think, I think we've built a process, being planned to see, for purchase, and a lot of people are really purchasing, and, um, I think we'll get some kind of, I see a building called the clock tower, it's a queen, that's the, I think, I should say, thank you.
Eighteen eighty-one was the original one, and then that one since nineteen seventy-two.
Thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
May I make a suggestion? We got a Franklin Press person here?
Yes.
Okay, Franklin Press could give free advertisement to some company who wants to redo that clock tower.
Well, let's talk to me about that. Can we ask one question, county, county?
Yes, we do.
Good evening, um, I'm here tonight to discuss, uh, contract with McGill Associates for the planning phase of Phase One A of Recreation and Magic Planting, um, which includes the tennis courts, pick-up ball courts, the multi-use, uh, building will have bathrooms, changing rooms for, for tennis, and also a bridge that crosses from one side of the park to the other, um, which will enable buses that come to tennis matches, park on a community building side, which is a whole lot easier access than to go up on the full tour. We went through the RFQ process to, uh, to pick McGill Associates, um, then we went through a negotiation phase within, um, the original contract cost total was one hundred and seventy-three thousand two hundred, and we were able to get them down to one hundred and sixty-three thousand two hundred. Seven, sorry, yeah, seven, not two hundred.
And we did have two hundred thousand in the budget, so there's no appropriation needed to bend over into this contract, we had originally just put two hundred thousand pick-up ball courts, courts, plans, change, change, you know, the ownership vision for the park, so we can take, you know, money, can we, in this contract, out of that contract?
We're looking for a motion.
Motion to approve, we got eight hundred and twenty-seven for Phase One A.
We have two ways.
I just want to give a quick update, we had a person, Greg, he ain't on meeting today, he's like, well, coming down the mountain, and then just made it as well. That's two trips down the mountain, everything there, um, something we've been talking about for a number of years, pick-up ball, tennis courts, and, uh, paddle facilities, and, uh, this falls right in line with our CRB, we butted this item, you sure, I think, you got that, for now, the motion?
No. No, I think, um, it's very exciting for, uh, new lives at this park, uh, pickleball players have been very patient, understanding for this process, um, and, um, I'm, I'm excited and ready for, um, a new life, sorry, this red car.
That was one sixty-three, seven hundred. This time I'm making a motion to enter the contract with McGill Associates, three hundred and one sixty-three, seven hundred.
We've heard the discussion. No, all agree, but raising me.
Thank you.
Thank you, it's unfortunate. Greg, can you give us a little, uh, time frame on this, uh, four, four minutes?
Should not take more than ten minutes.
That turns it down the hall to the right, clear.
Make a motion, we go into closed session.
Pursuant to one thirty-three, dash thirteen, point eleven, eight, three, four.
A few minutes later.
And I said, and that's why I wouldn't take you from where you're at, but, you know, if you know something, it might be second to come, you know, I'll, I'll... So, that's what, I mean, that's the only way, it's a very...
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, after, uh, discussion, I would like to ask the board to entertain a motion, uh, for a budget amendment in the amount of sixty-nine thousand, seven hundred and eighty-six dollars in fund balance, and that would go towards purchase of the bidirectional radio system, the installed in the Macon Middle School main building facility, as well as the Macon Middle School locker room complex. Go move, Chairman.
One second.
As well as, you know, excuse me, as well as the sixty-nine thousand, seven hundred and eighty-six, also includes the consolidation of all change orders remaining at the Macon Middle School locker room complex.
And resolution, uh...
And resolution, uh, out of the, um, of the...
While we're in discussion, I feel like we need to start public on what, what we're doing here, I do with the emergency event, maybe some of the stuff like that, just give a brief description.
Sure, uh, this project, we had some things, uh, from the beginning, such as, uh, you know, we had omitted from the, what we're now on the plans, the low voltage wiring that the architect had left out of the plans, and the building inspector, or, excuse me, the contractor, uh, you know, have to have that to move forward, so, uh, to get a, to keep occupancy. So, at that time, we had to, uh, issue a change order of ninety thousand dollars to install that low voltage wiring, because we have to have that, and, uh, in doing that, that ate up the majority of our hundred and twenty thousand dollars, around about contingency for this project, I mean, we were pretty much hands from right there. And, and so, the change orders that approved following that, uh, were included in that total as well, a lot of those were in, in the normal course of doing business, but we would have come nowhere closer exceeding our contingency, had we not had that major, uh, omission and error by the architect, um, on this project. And so, we have worked to resolve, uh, that issue and consolidate at the same time, um, the project we got behind, there were some liquidated damages that had approved, um, we were able to resolve those, uh, with the building contractor, and, uh, we were able to reach an agreement with the building contractor and the architect, which, uh, we basically negotiated all that down into that sixty-nine thousand, seven hundred and eighty-six dollar number. We'll reference the total cost of the, uh, installation of the bidirectional radio system, which also, again, was, uh, was not told to us at the beginning of this project. And then, uh, building contractor and architect would back and forth, so to settle this, and board litigation would end with sixty-nine thousand, seven hundred and eighty-six dollar number for everything, um, just to give you some idea, the installation for the bidirectional radio system would have been eighty-seven thousand dollars back for the middle school, as well as the locker room project. But, again, we were able to package this deal together, and put all that into that sixty-nine thousand, seven hundred and eighty-six dollar number. So, again, by no fault of anyone in Macon County or anybody on our team, uh, we just don't feel a bad hand, it's one of those situations where it's stuck with the mountain, if we go to litigation, uh, we're going to end up spending more, and it's going to be a coin finger contest, and you're never going to be able to really do the bottom. So, we're happy to settle this, um, you know, anytime we exceed, I, I can't think of, uh, anytime we exceed it, continue to see more project, what we do is something we do that's serious, and we know this board, uh, as Commissioner Young alluded to, expects, uh, full explanation, so, again, by no fault of our own, uh, we're still to thankfully get this resolved, and thankfully to turn over the first-class locker room facility there, those children at Macon Middle School, it's been a long time coming, I feel very good.
Mr. Motion, have a second to that discussion?
Again, the motion would be to, uh, to appropriate sixty-nine thousand, seven hundred and eighty-six dollars in fund balance, uh, where it has the accompanying budget amendment, and that would be for the installation of the bidirectional radio system at the Macon Middle School main building, as well as the Macon Middle School locker room complex, and additionally, to consolidate all the remaining change orders on the Macon Middle School project.
I'm doing very well, Mr. Chairman, how are you? I do have Curtis' list. I mean, he's either shadowing me or I'm... He's the name of the answer, Dr. Huggins, so you should do it. Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity, and Phil and I had a discussion, and Tim also was here there last week, about bringing the three-dash-ones, uh, for the funding that y'all approved, thank you again, uh, on the previous meeting, for the moving the projects forward of the fire rescue training center, and then also for the growth center expansion, I believe those two-dash-ones, that's our terminology in education, which is our construction project numbers, uh, we call them three-dash-ones, we, uh, we approve the allocations of the funds, we put them on the three-dash-ones, and, um, so, in the state, uh, of movement. It gives me great pleasure to let you know, because we were trying to fast track this, that we did that last week after the community approved the funding, we fast tracked those down, also approved these three-dash-ones, we approved the state, the system of the, uh, because that just incorporated some additional funding funds, you know, just any of the state budget funds, and that, and that, and that's, and we're able to, uh, check that box and approve, which gives us the opportunity to report to the project, so we can, you know, hopefully, um, thirty days, uh, before we just put them in our RFPs together. That's for a wrap, if there was anything else you want, uh, I think that's...
Does it take a vote on that? No, no, I think the board needs to, the board needs to formally approve, uh, each of them, and I think, you know, just to draw a note, of course, as included in the CRB, um, the, the fire rescue training center comes on, the additional operation of half of the sixty-nine thousand, seven hundred and eighty-one, that will be tied to that facility, that will be a component of ours, uh, but, again, we're getting capital facility paid up, and this will not come into the budget, uh, until that facility is, has been constructed and is online, and it's something that we're getting the CRB, and that we're trying to work, just wanted to bring back your attention, but I, I, I think it would, uh, if these have already been approved at the state level.
Yes. Because they were amendments to the original board...
Just to be clear, I think we should approve it, and approve that, just for our... Uh, yes, yeah, just, the first one would be for the fire safety training facility, uh, for the fire rescue training center, we need a motion and an approval, and, again, we already did this last meeting, we've already approved the plan, this is just for now. Yeah, uh, no, I make a motion that we approve the, uh, notification, we lost the amount of capital for the project, I would make a change.
Hey, let me ask forward something about this, uh, what's the fee schedule associated with fire training? Just say, ought to, to kind of, do they, they use them, you know? That there's a...
And whether the county's...
Other towns, they even come over here? And then, the junior firefighters, for the high school, they have a collaboration, maybe they'll kind of use that also in the... It's totally different than the business floor, education, we want to solve that. We, we, we think, uh, education, if I may, say legislate, if we all put the safety, personnel fees, uh, for the mission, and it's an investment in public safety for the safety of the people, therefore, if, if we go over the eighty-two, we have that same luxury of being a teacher, and that college of work, of the, or across the state. So, Dow has a large, uh, weekend fire school, that they do every spring, I think, from March, two, three-day event, and there's firefighters from all over the state, and they're all teachers, and, uh, just, just kind of, you know, around law and training. But it's just kind of a, you know, ground law and training that they can gain over weekends time when we're doing it at that. And while we have some, it's in our service area that comes to that, the Cherokee tribal comes over, you know, the plane comes over, we can give a facility training. We try to do as much as we can, we challenge what they are, because the sparks of them come over for some things, just because they're out of their district. And like one in town, they will be very tough to then come over and do this, and the same thing for one in the pasture, and that. So we try to do as much as we can locally for them, instead of having the facility available for them. And they get that luxury of including it on their high settle weight and on their, on their expectations, too. But, no, it's good, I may go off topic here, but it's okay.
What about the indoor firing range, are people associated with that?
It uses an educational, just so, because you have the live building and you actually use the third building, so it could, so it could use for, uh?
So I'm sure you update anytime we want to get along with our students, whatever we get us.
I'd like to, it's the first thing that moves this, we're going to go through it.
I'm sorry, I'm going off. This is get it all out. And then those fees associated with the maintenance, can we share those fees between the two buildings or are they independent now? Are they line items that you got to pay per building, or is that something that we?
It's all the operational things that you use to include in the additional square footage that you're picking up. So if you have a gallon of whatever over here, you add another three thousand square feet over here, you're going to need two gallons.
So you're saying it's a product, performing about four square foot, or maintenance a week and a half?
And that's all part of the operational standpoint. That's where you see the additional, either a full-time employee to help with that additional maintenance, cover that square footage, or a part-time employee to be able to, to work that a lot.
Is somebody staffing the buildings at all times? I just book them and use them as needed.
We would have someone there for oversight, for any, so the current, anyhow, if someone comes over, you know, the farm building, the training range, we would have someone that succeed that would be present.
I guess that's the direction of my question, is if we have somebody that comes in here from Salem County or Cherokee, and they don't need in a condition that, you know, ultimately it's ours, it's our maintenance cost, and so I'll make sure that, you know, they, they have shots here, so, so.
Yeah, we visited A B Tech's indoor range, which is very similar to what indoor range is looking at construction. And they have someone that, that is for jobs, is scheduling and everything for that. And they, they have very strict regulations for who, the instructors, because being a part of the instructor, spatial feet, and then a cell, so anyone just can't go in there and utilize the range unless they have that space. And the same thing with the private train facility, we don't just let someone go up there and use the track without that.
Curtis, this, I don't know if this has ever been brought forward, but how many courses are there to be allowed on certified firefighter?
Well, right now, this school, we've got three blocks, it's going to take about a year of, of that, too, and, and total hours in the summer is, is?
Four hundred and, four hundred and seventy, I think.
So through this training facility, there are new certifications built into that facility, ladders, ventilation, I mean, from air packs to, I mean, it goes on and on and on. Well, short of actually having a full-on fire academy, this is perhaps one training facility for, and ultimately, we save money by not seeing these guys at A B Tech. I've spent many, many trips going across the mountain for these facilities, and so this, we can keep our, our men and women right here in Macon County.
And that's part of the investment of the fire apparatus that we have now, to allow the departments to come in and what they operate, so we do the issues, too, for assets and, and, and we still would train, turn that between, and then that for.
No, no. We got two more. On the whole, man, it's pretty.
Oh, we got a motion to second.
Moving to the second three-dash-one, it's just reflective of no additional operating cost, it's reflective of all the capital commitment that the board made at previous meeting. So that would just make a motion in a second, formally approve the three-dash-one, approve the growth center expansion.
Just a quick time, I'll make a motion, drive by, three-dash-one, growth center expansion.
Please hold a second. Before the discussion, I'll leave you one second. All the fireworks are on you. No, don't, the A B Tech, no, go back to. They used to be seven layers. No move. On the third one.
Okay, is there just any discussion or consideration of, of the actual firing range?
All right, on this one, I bring good news also, and then also need to request support in approving the three-dash-one. This is where we received ten million dollars in the last general assembly to our friend, your friend, our state representative, Mr. Gillespie, was, worked hard for us as a region to, to give ten million dollars, put in a new refining range that will be used as an educational training facility. Regionally also, because I believe there's how many different departments, crews that you use, that you train?
In the neighborhood, certain, they're coming, so again, it's something to, and this, this is from state, state level, too, you know, it's not just down the state, we do have some forces that, now, they are not too exempt from the state lines, because they do have to figure, to, 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 and then the national board, sometimes they use it, and, and, and it's kind of odd on some of the.
So this, and this is a new three-dash-one, if you all take a look at and consider, and then the recurring ongoing expense that there would be for cleanup and light extraction, there'd be a couple of classrooms, including this one. Oh, okay, very good.
Nice. Very good to be sure Gillespie also, so, so, so.
Yeah, it's, 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 it is, but you know, by the time you take off that construction fee and contingency fee and designer fee, you know, that's, that's the thing, that sometimes it's a lot of money, but by the time you take off everybody else's fee, you have to pay that thing, probably only be left with, you know, two or seven million dollars. Could be adjacent, right next to, 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 right there, she placed the main building, we put it out on that, it's a lot of, right across from, yes, I didn't, I didn't do it all right across.
That's a range, how many classrooms?
Probably, I think it'll probably be a couple classrooms. Really, you got your station area, you really got a vault, you got gun set, you got ammunition site, personally, you got the, 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 the range area.
My local law enforcement, I can't really access this. Yes, it is. In a day and time where carrying a badge is, is not for the money, and we've got a wall, we have a program, that man right there and several others, but I'm sitting here thinking how cool it's going to be to have all this stuff all back together. And that's going to cost us, but that's what's going to save us. Men and women, not have to cross the mountain, a lot of our service, carry our trucks, and it's going to be yours. I just hope our sheriff utilizes this, to see, you know, a lot of our local resources use these power departments.
The, the one good thing with indoor firing range, that's the fire mill and that, what we're wrestling, I put them away in the ground, and now the agency grab, build for, we're still going to keep that range in operation, and we're still using it, but, but, too, but it gives them the opportunity to lower down the amount of time, and it's a day qualification or not, we can finish the day, put the switch, go to the night, so we're going to save a lot of training now, what's up with sitting around waiting on the skip, low life situation, so we can do night drives, and, you know, and, 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 and hear anything out there in the environment, in fact, that we want to have, to be able to live, because of the range and all those things, that we, that we, that we.
So, no one from the general public is going to be allowed to use this facility, such as concealed carry, training, no? Uh, okay. What kind of technologies will be able to, 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 to?
That's a great question. It's a great question, the ballistic protection to the range, and air handling systems, too, of course, of high cost, for, too, because based on the size of the range, we have to move so many people to, to protect the lead out of the air, so the shooters are not inhaling that, and, and, so there's a big filtration system with it, so that's a large part of it, of that A P S system that is in, regulated for, for heat and air, and then keep the air clean as well. And the ballistic part of it before, we could shoot anything from a handgun, a steel rifle, and that it will, we have ballistic protection on the wall all around, so we won't, we don't need to, to, from what we call the indoor range, so, so, and the athletic structure, and the back, is, is another key expense to, to be able to get that better, and, and, and we can actually recycle that, that, too, which is, where you have, that, too. When Jackson comes, and then the money to review the, the fire training facility, build for, it's a huge expense for us to get the lead out of there, and a lot of times the companies do, do, reuse of it, they come in, they pay back to, to show that we're in that good place, so they know when it's made and, and, so we actually have to take the bomb and wrap it up, I could read it out of a box, and use it in the bomb, just for protection, and keep the range in operation, and, and, now we've got sand trap over there, that we can mine up there in the future, so, you know, future generation is going to be pleased with that.
Well, I'll have to say, when I got this agenda and I read that, going to build a ten million dollar indoor range, I thought, who in the world has, I mean, this is the first, this agenda is the first time that I've heard this, and I said, Mr. Chair, Chairman, what are you doing to me? We're going to spend a hundred million years in, over there? But then, of course, then researching, and, and then I found out the state was paying for this, and so.
We recently had one of our recruits, who worked at church, like, too, in the legislature board, and shooting one of the fire sergeants that they had. The one thing that, that allowed us to do is spend more time doing low life training with the officers, because now, if the road is the range, and you make kind of smaller ranges over there, we'll do some day night firing, and we just got to sit around and wait. And then when we start night firing, we have a cutoff time that we want to stop by eleven, but, but it's going to be good night, you know, in the time that we don't want to. So by ten o'clock, we're trying to wrap up, so we're out of there, and not destruct the city, the community, stuff like that. So this allows us to keep them in that training range for no longer time, and, and, and they were excited about it, but I think the officers, we know about it, we've heard about, they're excited about it because of the opportunity of low life, because of working in those conditions. Maybe sunny outside, but they may enter someone's house, they're in a low life situation, they never know what can be, sort of, you know, the opportunity to, to, to.
Well, all I can say is, all of our men and women in uniform, regardless of what level of service that they deserve, and need the best facilities to protect themselves, our community, and our city.
I'm hard for a great person, losing time for a second, because his son is a law enforcement.
Can I make a point real quick? I don't, maybe this is going to mention, but, of course, thankful y'all got the ten million dollar grant for the state, but there will be, when it comes online, this board will be expected to, you know, provide operating costs, which are projected currently at fifty-four thousand seven hundred and fifteen per year. Just want to make sure that was just out there, and, and, moving forward, of course, looks like it will be operational to fiscal twenty-seven, maybe?
Yes.
Was it three-dash-one? So just understand, by approving the three-dash-one, you are committing to, you know, future boards to the, you know, operating costs.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the dash one for indoor firing.
I'll second that motion.
Can you go to the discussion? All the playing, we're on, man.
Andy keeps that. Thank you all very much, appreciate it.
Appreciate it. So next up, discussion of consideration of resolution, re-commission of Macon County Crawford Senior Center. We have wonderful mission.
Tell you about Friday, okay, let me real quick tell you about Friday before I leave. On Friday at one o'clock at the senior center, a representative from Congress of Edwards office will be there presenting Macon County senior services, a flag that has been pulled over the hackle. We have got a nice crack case already, Cory, we're going to be hanging that in our main lobby. Lady Silver from that office will be coming to present the flag. And you guys are, of course, all invited to come be part of that presentation that we have in the senior center. So, one o'clock, one o'clock on Friday. Good evening, and thanks for letting me come talk a few minutes. Hopefully, it'll take but a couple of minutes, you're going to hear me talk about those, our wonderful folks at the center, all their volunteers. We have some of the best volunteers that you're going to find in Macon County, and hopefully with some of the numbers I'm going to run through, it's going to prove it to you, Dr. D, you got to put on the glasses, or multiple of those. In calendar year 2023, about a hundred and twenty-five volunteers donated five thousand and four hours to Macon County senior services. And we talked some about the independent sector with the garden club, at that rate that the independent sector gets for North Carolina, those hours are worth about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to Macon County, that those hundred and fifty, or a hundred and twenty-five volunteers give us. There is no way with the staff that I have, that I could do everything that those volunteers help us do. They are amazing. They do things from delivering meals to our homebound older adults, they lead a lot of our classes, they help with open enrollment for ship, they just contribute lots and lots. I'm going to spend a few minutes going through the different areas that they do help. And our volunteers, even though that five thousand hour sounds like a buck, we are still rebuilding after, that small thing called COVID that hit a few years ago, it did impact us, but we are greatly, greatly improving our volunteer base. Who knows what SHIP stands for, I have a careful saying to you. Anybody know? Gary, you know what SHIP is? It's, it is the state senior health insurance information program. That's our Medicare folks, and that's, those of you who make the Medicare age. We have volunteers who help us with that. There are four ladies who help us with that every year, and those four ladies canceled over four hundred, well, canceled four hundred and forty-five votes in 2023. That amounted to about 768 hours that those four ladies contributed to help individuals understand Medicare. That's not including those one paid staff member who helps. That's all volunteer hours with that. With COVID, they were doing a lot of that by phone. We've now got them back in the building and they're doing a lot of their counseling right there in the senior center. Our activities volunteers, wow, they stepped it up this year. Our activities volunteers contributed right at 1,500 hours in 2023. They, we had over 14,000 duplicative participants in our different classes in 2023. Daily classes ranging from dance class to IT to arts and crafts. We do have one volunteer, she's pretty amazing. She was with us in Franklin several years ago and she led yoga classes for us. Well, she moved off to Arkansas. She was there maybe two months and called us and this was a Zoom was getting started and she said, I miss teaching a class. Can I teach it from Zoom, from Arkansas? Sure, we can make that happen. So she's been teaching, she calls us home to a good year from Arkansas. Then her husband got a job in Italy. So she moved to Italy. Guess what? She's still teaching a Zoom, a Zoom yoga class for us all the way from Italy. There's about a six hour time difference. So we have our yoga class at 10:00 in the morning here, it's 4:00 in the afternoon there. But she is so committed to teaching those classes, she teaches for us all the way to Italy. She won't make our volunteer banquet, by the way, if it can help any people, but she is just amazing. Our home delivered meal volunteers remain strong. Those volunteers contributed almost 2,700 hours in 2023. They deliver just over 11,000 home meals to 70 homebound seniors in eight counties in both Collins and Crane. In addition, we served about 10,000 home meals to 266 different congregants of this place in our dining room. One of our areas that's really starting to grow is our Adult Day program with volunteers. Now that we have reopened back to participants, our volunteers, we were kind of slow on letting volunteers come back in there because those folks are usually our most fragile of our older adults at home in the center. So we were slow bringing them back, but they have now started coming back and they are playing music for our folks in Adult Day. They help them with lunch, they do story time. Sometimes it's just simply spending time with those older adults, building puzzles. We have some that are to work on puzzles. And just so you got some numbers on Adult Day, in 2023, we had over 2,200 duplicative participants in our Adult Day program. Our volunteers, the range is incredible. We have volunteers aged 24 to 92. You heard me, 92. And that volunteer can run circles around a whole lot of us. We have several in their early 90s who are delivering meals. Many times the volunteers are delivering meals to folks who are younger than they are. The bulk of our volunteers are in their 70s and they leave out there and they're in those years. There is not enough I can say about them. They are, they are amazing. Their commitment is fabulous. They meet a lot of needs in our community that otherwise would go unmet. My role has been blessed by those volunteers. It's great, every, every chance I can get out to speak to those volunteers, especially the home delivered meals, it's just, I think it's just an honor on my part to get to thank them. I would like to ask you folks to adopt the resolution recognizing those volunteers, April 21st through 27th as Macon County Volunteer Week. I think there's already a resolution in the packets. There's also an invitation for each of you in your packet to our volunteer appreciation event that we will be holding on Tuesday, April 23rd at 4:00 there at the center. It is an opportunity for us to thank those volunteers for all they do for our older adults in the community. Any questions that you might have about the volunteers?
Yep, just want to say thank you to these volunteers. I think it's awesome that you guys, our appreciation that you have. I was not aware of just how much time it was given to all of you. And I've seen you such, you guys such an awesome senior.
You guys experienced a many.
I had a good time. It was good.
All right, at this time, gentlemen, I'd like to make a motion to approve the resolution of recognition of Crawford Senior Center volunteers. More discussion.
Now, the only thing that, I have no question. What happens at the Senior Services Center? It's amazing. And those seniors are, that's what it means to me, are dear to my heart. And the work that y'all do with those and often, I'm just grateful for all the volunteers and the work that you guys do.
They're very dedicated.
They deliver meals all over this county. All over this county. I think that's probably the highlight of a lot of, of this county. And a lot of the time, you love to see the interaction.
It's the person. As they go all the way from Swing County down to Georgia Road, out to Highlands Road, into Hollins, Staley, they cover pretty well all of Macon County, pretty popular. Manhole holes is a little challenge because you can't maintain food tents, you get some manhole, but wear product and medicine solutions. Well, but then that doesn't mean our nutrition guidelines were the money we could pay for. We tried, we thought. See you guys on the 23rd, April.
I was just wondering, you know, still working on the new senior center. I've got some massive needs, so it's not going to be easy.
I mean, that issue is even just yesterday, but then I'll be going to have a chance at a big deal about it. All right, thank you so much.
Go ahead, I'll do that.
Senior Health Information Program.
Yeah, very good, very good.
Senior Health. Program.
I didn't write it down, I didn't write it down.
All right. Okay, well, thank you for having me tonight. Over the last three years, you've been working to bolster your career in technical education program in the Macon County schools. And in just those very short years, we've increased pathways for students from eight to 20. And next year, we are planning to open a school, we're running 23 pathways. And we're adding an agility academy, cognitology, and a firefighter academy that you heard earlier in this meeting. So this year our students are going to earn over 1,000 industry recognized credentials, another PCMA, PCMA with a certified medical license, EMT, and another one with this. So we're looking at the pathways that we're offering to students and the credentials that they're earning. It seems like the next logical step is to do our curriculum in a more rigorous way. So they're really wide with what we're doing. So now we've got to get a few for our students. And so, working in collaboration with county manager Derek Rowland, Sheriff Frank Holbrooks, and the Director of Emergency Medicine Services, Warren Hayes, we've developed a work-based learning program that our students have named the Panther Pulse. And so the Panther Pulse stands for Panther Organized Learning Safety. And our students in Mr. Pickens' Public Safety Class have designed a logo, you can see on the front of this page, that has like the heartbeat, the pulse, and then a panther head. And they have over shirts, and that's on the front of the shirt. And on the side of the shirt, they've also developed a bag that goes on the seat. So that's a whole thing of public safety, firefighter, and you can go to other, um, places to share the baggage around.
Patches.
The patches, yes, patches. So the Panther Pulse will allow seniors who have continued public safety courses to offer to me to intern in various county departments where they will be involved in real world, hands-on learning, and still on a sincere, um, gratitude for civic duty, so a call of duty for civic service. Students will also have the opportunity to drop shadow while they're enrolled in the public safety classes where they're learning about the various parts of public safety. So this opportunity is only available due to the honorary brand commitment of the school board and the Macon County Commissioner in Macon County in creating new learning programs. It's because of the collaboration that we have, that we can apply for those programs that are like this. And as I've said many times before, the reason why we can offer 23 pathways and get over 1,000 credentials is because of the talent of our future. And this program is no exception. Mr. Larry Pickens was willing to earn additional certifications so that we can offer this course. And he also gave up his training period as well. Thanks to the additional funding that you all worked towards last year, we'd be able to add this additional course. And through collaboration with the school board, we're able to make this happen for our community. So Mr. Pickens this year, he didn't want to come up here, but I would love to be able to let him have an opportunity to tell you about the qualification history of earning. It makes him eligible to be able to come out and do an internship at the Fire Department at first place. So can you, you want to talk a little bit?
She said you was going to sing.
No, no, I'm saying.
You can sing. I, I, I can, I can sing, but I shouldn't.
This has been a vision that we had and I contacted Derek, I contacted Brent, and Warren, we want to put these kids in an environment where they want to go work at. We've got one right now that's an internship at the jail every morning from 8:00 to 10:00, and then he comes onto school at that point. They were more than willing to accept these kids in. Johnson, I think, should, like settle in the apartment, inside the church apartment that they were willing to put these kids in. Warren's got that, they're going to work with the Fire Marshal Squad Board, just a bunch of different positions, not only in the Fire Department. We left it at county level, hopefully when the county on end a little bit later. We went to McVal County a couple of months ago. They are actually having students do guidelines with the City of Icefall on a 44-hour shift in the Fire Department. We got to get that excitement, that interest generated somewhere. We think this is the place to do it. We also kicked around that hopefully in a year or two, some of the parker students coming in and doing some stuff with maintenance, county maintenance, and that type of stuff. But, but actually, like, these kids will leave my place at 1:30 and they've all agreed to stay till like 5:00 o'clock a day. So it's not an hour and a half class they're going to stay with.
Do you think this will pick up the interest of our volunteer department?
We hope so. And we want to know next week, enrollment, registration for this week's unit. We want to know about the Fire Academy. Those 470 hours we were talking about a while ago, those kids will win in July with a label and they will be ready to go around to Clark's Chapel, advertising the county. But I think one's got two, which was a four position, don't we? Two or three, four kids interviewed this past month from the first EMT class that we're doing at the high school this year with Macon County. One thing you mentioned about the place that's been available in Macon County, the Southwest and that stuff, is you get first shot at him picking these kids. My son is enrolled in a, apparently in program in Cherokee right now, and they're already recruited. It's out there. If you're not in the recruitment business here, the length of the year, you won't lose it.
This is, you know, we're talking about the time that we face here. This is something that, I wish I could thank you all so much for putting this together and coming to us because from the county center, I mean, this is a tremendous effort to, to support a bigger program. We have been raised here, built a school here, we want to stay here and this gives them an opportunity to do that. So this is things that really matter.
Well, and if they're doing an internship with them, say at the dispatch office. They know if they want to hire them. That, that time is already been, that time, you know, they've, they've had their training session. They just give it here, everybody on time. We need something really interesting, we're going to be a dedicated employee or being a current faculty. And it saves everybody time. That's what we're looking for. Hopefully it goes back to generating for the volunteer Fire Department also, even if they can't get career in it from college. But they're, they're wide open right now. I feel like they're hiring, you know, starting to sort of.
It also serves another purpose too. At Franklin High School last year, we had almost 54 students who were early grads. And some of those students had plans to enroll or enlist, but some of those students did not and they also weren't employed. And so they had nothing that they were doing for the second semester. So this gives them an opportunity to be involved with something and be in the internship as a professional where they can be inspired to move toward something else. And so that's a really, a really great custom, like a big custom that they are looking for in our country. So thank you.
Can we go ahead and make the first motion?
Let me make the motion.
Make motion. This time we approve Pulse, Panther Organized Learning, this doesn't change. Does it land on to your, your favorite trade master?
Before we get to our discussion, I understand it's a well-known shop and firefighting and all these. But now it's complacency to come in flood of your, you know, economics and career building complacency.
Oh, one of, this is very new. So we brought you our new course catalog, it's now included in there. But we have been dealing with our seniors and we had about 15 students because they like to study psychology.
I don't know what it is.
Oh.
I don't know. Care.
Eyebrows.
Fortune, fortune.
Call me back. I'm assuming you're married, you have.
He's been in trees too long.
You go every month.
That was a bad question, right?
So they, they kids want to do hair, nails, they want to do like. All of that. One of the things that's, that's a little bit tricky with that is that it's only offered at Southwest and at the Silver Campus because you have to have like some, some, some other things. So it'll be available to those kids to our second semester who are in early grads. So instead of being an early grad, they're not having anything, you don't need to drive over to the Silver Campus from 8:00 to 3:00. And then they'll cover their kits for them, that's about almost $2,500 to have that kit and their whole tuition is free. And so instead of being an early grad and being at home, they would be at Southwest and they will be graduating, whatever it is, with psychology, whatever, hair, whatever. So it'll be a really great benefit for them to be able to do that. But it is a barrier because we have to travel. So they need gas money. So that's something that, that we're working on to make sure that there's a right path coming out of there. In addition, not be able to take the class because of the.
The nice thing about that is though, with the career of college program, it's free for them, they don't pay tuition to Southwest.
So otherwise, so if they decide to do this after. So otherwise, so if they decide to do this after they graduate, they'll less support them down at all. If they do it now.
That much of it's free.
They have to pay for gas and everything. So a couple of things about the course catalog and then the front cover, there's a QR code there, you scan that, can be my Facebook friend for our CTE, trying to get bi printer followers. Um, and then on the back cover too, if you haven't seen our promotional video, scan that, you'll love it. It's one and a half minutes, it's all featuring all of our students out at Angel Medical, out at the airport, and Mr. Pickens welding class, and it's talking about what they aspire to be. So make sure you check that out. There's, there's a sound on that, it's not a dog.
And on page 25.
Page 25?
If you're asked for fine arts, it's all in, go to page 25, if you can read down fine arts and according to this, for those students, uh, leaving from page 25 to 29, you need to have a conversation with somebody that according to fine arts, you can see it like this way, you can paint it. And you look at this, some of the courses are on courses.
Yes.
This is real, it's really good. But sometimes you get asked about fine arts, sort of all of those programs where people say music is made with someone like this. No, you can open up page 25 to 29 and you can see the value of some of the fine arts programs.
Okay. And thank you for pointing that out. So this is all of like this, um, so because it's important for kids to be able to have all of these options, because I'm missing the options that are available, those kids are really proud of it. So now, now you must know that the teachers at the other content area, so why aren't our classes in this with it? So next year when you come, I'll, I'll hand you like a phone book. So, so it's a great thing that they're proud of their classes and their ability.
You just pointed out that page that you wanted to put before, page before the celebrity appearance.
Oh, that's at the airport, yes. Oh, and I forgot to tell you, all invited, um, next Friday, the 22nd, to the airport, the aviation thing will be having their second air, air flight time. So they should be there about 10:00 AM and stay till about 2:00 if you want to pop in and see what's going on. You'll love it.
We're seeing.
We got a hug and then say hi to them.
All the flavors? All right, good.
Thank you.
Now we get to talk about my business. I'm excited to talk. Uh, so tonight I'd like to, to talk to the board about, uh, kind of bring up the speed as to what's going on, we're getting a number of, of programs going on. And then we'd also like to, to ask the board for, uh, uh, commitments so that we can participate in upcoming program going through. Let's start here. Uh, first place I'd like to talk about is, uh, is Nantahala, this is a project that, uh, that y'all approved last, uh, last fall. Uh, the Nantahala Project was one where we're, uh, the county is procuring connectivity to five county facilities in the Nantahala legislature. The Frontier Fire Substation, the main Nantahala Library and Community Center, the, uh, the main, uh, Frontier Fire and Rescue Facility, uh, the EMS Facility, and then also Recreation. And so, uh, that project actually kicked off at, uh, at the first of the year. And, uh, we had certainly the making of the fiber, um, Olson West is underway, building fiber. And the process they're going through in, uh, in this area is they are actually spreading steel, spraying cables from pole to pole. Uh, and then they will come back and attach the fiber to that steel frame. And so they're about 50% now of the, of the steel cable left, uh, and they adjusted on the fiber, actually definitely done a lot of that, whether they're starting in the right time or not. One of the, uh, they have revised their, uh, their part completion to the first of June. They were hoping to actually finish, uh, by the end of April, first of May, but we were committed and weather related, so they're pushing that out a little bit, but they're looking. One of the reasons they're starting from the John Lusk and then going back up is because they need to install some equipment at the Nantahala School. And so we met, they actually made a request, uh, the end of last year, uh, for them to locate a pad and some equipment there at the school. Uh, we all met out there, Mr. Pickens, and talked about what they wanted to do. They then prepared a, uh, proposal, uh, and that was presented to, uh, Macon County School for the, uh, in February. And I spent with Brenner and Mr. Rollin. Um, we got that, uh, that agreement executed last year, so, uh, Olson West did, uh, work on, I think they made a conference that night. Of course, the project is to provide connectivity to these five facilities, but, um, the, uh, and of course that's going to provide connectivity for the occupants of those facilities, the fire department, the EMS, uh, the library. Uh, but the other aspect in the community, uh, due to the lack of connectivity in the community in general, is public wifi. And so what we're able to do is procure a grant for Southwest Commission. And it's a, it's a $50,000 grant that is paying for, uh, the equipment and the installation of, uh, not only the network equipment to support the public wifi, but also the, the backup network. And so, uh, we were able to identify the network and local contractors. We've, uh, got most of the installation work completed, with the exception of the library, library is still in progress. And, uh, we're hoping to, uh, finish coordinating with, uh, Fontana IT Department to get, uh, the rest of that network stuff installed at the library. And, uh, and once the fiber's connected to the building, figure and testing, so we're moving right along. Uh, moving across the mountain, we are, uh, we've got a number of other grant programs that are, uh, that are in process. Uh, we've got the Frontier Great Grant. And just to, uh, remind everybody that that is a $3.8 million grant within the county with a $4.2 million project. Um, Frontier has completed their engineering work, their permitting is in progress. They are working on two, what they refer to as wire tuners. It's, it's the headings, the sort of fiber terminates to, uh, to get out of the community. And so they're working on two different facilities of construction within the county. Uh, they've got all the material derived and staged and, uh, they're working to secure the second level of their power. So, uh, we talked a little bit about where that's going to impact the county during the year. Olson West also has a grant, and they are, this is a $1 million grant, just under $1 million, it's a total of $1.2 million project, and that will, uh, serve parts of Southmaking. And, uh, they're currently in the engineering development, performing the process on that project. And then of course we have the Charter Rural Digital Opportunity Fund subsidy that's going to come into our area. That will be a $9 million subsidy coming in to, uh, to help build the fiber in the county. But we don't have any updates to the charter yet, as to when they're going to enter. We hope they're here by mid-year, if maybe towards the end of the year, but, uh, we're hoping they're going to cross the mountain, so they're, uh, currently working on that. Uh, moving on to this map, uh, of the county, I wanted to kind of illustrate what areas are being impacted by this grant. Uh, so if you look at this, uh, at the map of Macon County here, you see a line in red down towards the south end of the county. Uh, that is the area where the county invested in the Southmaking Fiber Back Company, 580,000 county invested in the project, uh, to build some infrastructure in the Southmaking County. The, uh, the green, uh, line area up under Nantahala's region is the, uh, the area that will be impacted by the, uh, $350,000 investment that Macon's making to, uh, to connect the facility that will also impact, um, the residents along those paths, so that core of the fiber path is through. Uh, the areas in blue, the, the bright blue here, this is the area that will be, these are the areas that will be impacted by the grid, uh, to, from here. And, uh, it's kind of spread all around the county, there are parts, uh, up in the Burnington area, up in the northern part of the county, a little bit up 28, heading from, uh, down in, uh, just north of Otto and, uh, and other areas. And then there's a couple of other areas down in Southmaking, one in Otto and a couple blocks in escape the mountain yellow. Uh, those are supposed to be the areas that are impacted by the great grant that Olson West is pursuing. And then tan area that we keep recurring, and we brought this, this up many times, so those are the areas that will be impacted by this, this, uh, charter, uh, subsidy that will be coming into the area soon, I hope. But we see there's a lot of other areas that we're not, um, impacting yet, uh, the grant fund, and that's the part we want to talk to the board about. Uh, there's a new program, uh, that the state that finally rolled out, we've been talking about it for a while, is referred to as the CAB program, CAB stating for continuing access program. And so the idea behind this program is to follow on to their great grant program and to try to pick up areas that have not been, um, affected by, uh, by the great grant. And they kicked off this program at the first of the year. Um, and one of the things that's different about this program than, uh, than the great grant program, great grant providers actually decided what they wanted to do. Uh, they put a proposal together and they, they took those applications, they went to the state and hopefully they would grant this on scoring criteria. Uh, this particular grant program is different in that the county collaborates with the state. NCDIT is the North Carolina Department of Information Technology. And they, it mimics all of the broadband grant programs that the state has. And so in this case, Macon County will collaborate directly with, uh, with NCDIT to identify the project area that we want to, to work on. And, uh, once we've done that, uh, that'll be developed into a request for proposals and posted on the state website. And, uh, then qualified providers that have been pre-qualified with the state can go and respond and keep doing progress with projects from the state. Um, and then once, uh, responders, uh, send their proposals in, then the county will sit down with the state representative of the state or view this proposal, uh, and select a provider. Uh, this grant program provides a maximum of $8 million, and that's a grant itself per county, per, per year. Uh, that grant can only be 75% of the total project cost. It's a 15% provider match as part of the total project cost that the county has allocated for 10% of the total project cost. In order for us to participate in this process, we've got a couple of things that we've got to do. We've got to go through, we've got to review all areas that are eligible, we've got to select, um, priority areas, areas that we want, uh, to focus on, uh, have of those that are eligible. Then we have to work with, uh, with the state in order to develop those that are possible to propose. There's a total of about 2,600 locations, uh, around the county that are eligible for this grant program. And so we would love to get many of us to attend. Can we show a picture here in just a minute? I think we can go ahead and get that right now, so we can look at it. So we have a green dot. And this is that same map I showed you before, but all of the, uh, the green dots scattered throughout, uh, these other areas are, are ones that have not been affected by that grant program. So those are all, uh, dots or locations that are eligible to receive funding as part of the program. We want to hit as many of those as we can. Uh, we're hoping, uh, to hit a project of around a thousand to 1,200 locations. A maximum grant for our county would be, uh, 10,670,000. And it could serve, uh, based on some of our estimates, could serve about 2,100 locations. There's no way we could hit all of them, uh, in a single calendar. So, um, so we're kind of projecting that, that the project would be at medium size. It would be, uh, potentially up to 6 million based on that, uh, kind of 1,200 locations we think we might be able to get. And that's based on some work that we've looked at. Uh, we're making an estimate at the moment of $5,000 per asset, per home, per, per location. And that's based on what we saw out of great grants for, uh, to that yield project of $6, 000 for a location. Uh, the actual project could be a little smaller, could be a little bigger depending on what the state, um, uh, requires us to do and also the cost. In order for us to enter into this program, um, the county must provide a home match. Okay? We have to basically, uh, tell the state that we are willing to commit X amount of funds, uh, to go after this grant. And of course, uh, we can't really participate with the state until we can, they only want to work with counties that are federated and have that grant. Uh, so what we're asking for tonight, we're asking for the board to approve a match commitment. Match commitment, we would like to see, and we would like to see a match commitment that would allow to pay the advance of a full $8 million grant. And that match commitment would be, uh, $1,670,000. Uh, that would be 10% of a, of a full, or of a full grant if we were to receive that. You know, the match, you can, you can, for example, a 100 K commitment, uh, could support an $8 million grant. So, you know, you could invest in that. We don't anticipate it's going to be a full project, but we would like to have the opportunity to go after it. And then of course, funds are only utilized if there's a worry that we're able to select a provider. We have a provider that actually bids on the project and wants to find a, 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 a So that's kind of what we're looking for here. We would like to participate in grant programs because we have the opportunity to bring up $7 million into, or at least an $8 million grant that can, that can, uh, present on our support for that. We need to basically, uh, create a letter of commitment, there's a form that the state has that, uh, and once the board agrees that we're willing to, uh, to make that commitment, we'll, uh, we'll complete that form and send that to the state and start working.
Also included in your, uh, agenda fact, following Mr. Lee's presentation, when you talked about funding, um, above that, you know, we, we have recommended here 396,425 dollars, put together a, a grant, probably a court amendment through the American Rescue Department that we received, or, uh, we're projecting around 396,425 dollars that's left over after the, part of the funds have been used for the, uh, free and paid. And so utilizing that, we're bringing the general fund amount, uh, maybe for this commitment down by 396,425 dollars, which will draw your attention to that. And to do that, we would basically use that 396,425 dollars, uh, for revenue replacement and, uh, same way we'd be able to, uh, bring in pay and then it would go towards that 1, uh, 1,670,000, it would go through that. So the balance of that would be what would be required for the.
670,000, 1,750,000.
Would be required from the general fund.
$8 million or?
That would allow you to record, uh, 8, uh, full 8 million dollar project.
8 million dollars, correct. Uh, so the full project, we ended up, uh, could be up to 1,300, 670,000.
670,575. So 670,000, 575,000. So 670,000, 575,000. Jeff, I did have a question.
Yes.
One of the topics we've been, that I've had a chance. Do we anticipate, do we have a commitment on this grant by recently reported this year? Do we know?
So the state is quite easy to move these funds. They have to have all the funds committed before the end of this, this calendar year.
Same thing with our
Same thing with our
Yes.
So what the state is pushing for is the state would like to see as many projects actually go to agreement before the end of this fiscal year, if possible. They already have 30 counties that have signed their commitment out of 100 counties.
Again, which expand our, this 396,425, our 95 is 31, 20.6, no problem. Because that's another contingency of our
Yeah. And the way this particular program works is, once the project goes to agreement with these, it's been approved by counties, then approved by the state, and all parties have signed agreement, then the county would give the funds directly to the state immediately instead of a 50/50 like we did with the grant program. And then the state would manage all funds as far as the county's concerned.
Can you go back?
Sure.
What you have to realize here when you look at this map, you can see what you're doing, all the stuff that's straight through. And now all this, I'm going to call it yellow, it's all that door that's on this map, the corridor, you left it. This way
Yeah, we're not allowed to touch those areas because it's a federal grant program. There is language in the treasury rules and also in subsequent federal programs that say funds can't be used in two places, in one place, considered funds. So because there's funding for this federal program for these Pan area, we can't even do the state grant funding for, it would act like state legislation. So because of that constraint, we're trying to focus on what we can address at this point in time. And all of these, these green dots here, they're a big cluster in Sanders County, adding the middle collegiate area, North Highlands, South Highlands, for our, so our job is to prioritize the areas and try to impact it more than just the So that's been our
And the yellow area, if they sell, if they go, then you're nervous about that.
It does, because there's no guarantee that they will finish that project. We're certain that they will come into the county, and you don't know how much they'll actually go out. They have ways to wiggle out if they're going to this thing. They're certainly committed this time to do it, but probably
If you play back down before it happens, what do we do if they back down?
This is a big conundrum right now across all the state programs because, because the federal programs that are very long cycle, they don't have to have that built out until the next point. And then all of these grant programs at the state level are much shorter term programs. And a lot of the funds that they're using in state programs will be exhausted by the next point in the year. And so charter decides to come in and just build out in few places and then they walk away. And what are able to do out of it, the more left areas that are very remote, that is kind of difficult for us to do. So it's a problem. And everyone nationwide is aware of this, of this issue, and there's a lot of companies that are in the works that they don't have to try to address some of these things.
That's why it's so important that we get this commitment now, so we can, I know.
Absolutely. If they're delayed, there will be subsequent money in coming years that are, will actually be funded through the state, through the infrastructure department, the jobs bill. That money won't start coming into this program until probably the 2025. So we want to be able to take as many funds that are available today so that if we have new problems to tackle tomorrow, we can do that.
This really should be probably a two-point motion because we committed to proceeding as the board would drop down magic carrying, but we've done two projects, gave the auto and the Nana Hill and the four down here, we've had nearly a million dollars in tax payer money, committing another $67,000 to collect $8 million in grants to what you should get, so I'll make a motion that we commit through, we're showing
Mr. Higginson, is your motion including the grant project ordinance and the general fund preparation as well?
Yeah, we've
So just for the record, let's be sure, so you need the letter of commitment, correct? So the letter of commitment would commit making counting to $1,670,000 of match, correct?
Correct.
The second part of that would be to approve the art grant project ordinance amendment that was proposed in the pack there. And the third part would be appropriate $670,575 from general fund balance as part of this grant. Is what I just said okay? Is your, your subsequent motion? Okay. Just want to make sure we cover all pieces.
That's okay, the motion.
I feel like I need to bring up a few issues that really kind of jump out at me. It's nothing personal, you know, even emotional, but I know you've put a lot of time into this, wrong way, but I'm probably going to get hurt, Paul. I'm under the impression this is really going to provide internet and self-coverage to what's the community that really don't have. Look at this map, like that's more or less where we already have it. We dropped it, every mountain highlands. I mean, you probably don't have internet service at your house or cell phone service.
Uh, not currently, but
And Nana Hill, but you know, they, Boston called me whenever we provided the 441 access. And I don't have the numbers in front of me, I don't want to miss both, but I remember a number of about $300 and something dollars a month for my business. Yeah, and I'm sitting here thinking that we're paying taxpayer dollars, grant funds, or one something to be able to run on collecting fees every month. I have a little bit of heartburn, but I feel like the intent for me is to be able to bring self-coverage to Nana Hill and to bring self-coverage to, it'll freak you off, so intentionally speedily. Look at this map, and I thought these green dots, all of those concentrated areas, that for the most part, already have that service. And I don't, you know, I thought maybe I don't have a clear understanding, but right now for me, another million dollar budget, having a little bit of anxiety, I would probably support this after this budget session and the parks and recs, the schools that have come up. But for me, pay $300 a month, I'm like, that's all right. That's what we have, that's cheap, easy, I have everything I need, and I'm pretty simple. You probably would have to gather it up.
I'd be happy to address a couple of things. So one of the things that the county has done is the county didn't pay for the project, for example, without making, as well as the fiber, by your business. What the county did is they paid for a little piece of the program. The project probably cost something over about a million, maybe two, to run that fiber all the way from the south end of the city limits, Franklin, down to Otto, connect up through the Descent Valley, all the way to St. Louis, and it also goes up to That was a big project to attack a lot here, number one. And a lot of that investment came from Boston West. A lot, there was also investment from Awood NC, and so it was a collaboration, and the county did pick the initiative. So this was service that didn't exist before, and so it also costs money to provide that service, or what you were being asked for, what you were being asked for service fees for, to connect to. And any provider who gets grant money, that was included in Frontier, Charter when they come in, there's other providers in the county as well, they all have to make a business case, and they all have to, they have to make the subscriber fees, monthly fees, pay for the maintenance So we're helping to defray some of the infrastructure parts through the experience. We're helping to get that fiber through, we're helping to get, you know, some of those things done. The fiber going through a cell tower, that's steam, and that comes, involves equipment and that. But they have to keep the businesses going, so they have to pay for all the equipment that light up that fiber. They have to, they have to, you know, at the end of the day, all businesses have to make profit and stuff like that. So, so all the companies, Frontier included, Charter, those are all in it for profit. And in these rural areas, where it is so expensive per location to serve, the grant money, the Kickstarter exercises that we've done at the county level, they were given to Grant, South Making, to Purture, and to Nana Hill, that helps to defer some of the services. It doesn't pay for it all, but it helps, you know, it helps, otherwise there's no business business going to stay here. As far as the areas that don't need it, even though you see there's areas with a lot of coverage in the middle and around Franklin, that doesn't mean that everybody should serve or can't be served. And so the way these locations are determined is these locations that are imported with no service, that not being served by the end company at all, they may get self-service, but they may not have hardline service. This particular grant, that's for the great grants, up for hardline or fix wireless type direct internet service, not self-service. Many of these grant programs are self-service. Sorry. I don't know if that answers your question, but I open me up. I guess I've been amazing, or maybe it's one of the other questions that I have, fundamental. And I'd be happy to talk to you more about it at one point in time.
There's a lot of those in some places, it's very hard to provide the service, you're in the city or something, and it's condensed.
It's the lack of density in a rural area, a density of customers. And so just for example, within a 12 mile stretch of road, or a one mile stretch of road, to build a mile of fiber for whatever, whether, nobody builds cable anymore, for a mile of fiber, a company has to have at least 12 customers along that line to pay for
I mean, I'm very Me, the people there, I just, I just want to
Yeah, I wanted to say
Thank you, dear. You want $300 a month to provide by
Thank you, dear. Appreciate what you said.
Absolutely, I'd be happy to talk to you about another thing. As you'll recall, this board, this board issued a request for qualifications for the construction manager at risk services for the Franklin High School project, we issued that in February. We received responses to that from three construction manager at risk contract firms on March 6th of 2024. The selection committee that was established for that project consisted of the liaison committee, so that would be Chairman Shields, Vice Chairman Young, as well as school board members. We have Ms. Breeden was here tonight, as well as Chairman Jim Breelov, who was on the selection committee. The first order of business, once the request for qualifications were received, we received three responses. One from Benoit Construction, one from Carol Daniel Construction, and one from Batson Cook Construction. The first order of business was for the selection committee using a set of predetermined criteria that was developed from our RFQ, discompendant things such as general company information, things like licensing information for the company, their corporate history, their organizational structure, their years of service, any current projects they had going, any litigation they had ongoing, each of those, under the general company information heading, were assigned a value, that combined with project experience. So each one of these firms, in their response to the request for qualifications, included a history of similar project experience that they have had with projects similar to the Franklin High School project, both in size and in the kind of building or building, which is a new school. So we were able, the committee was able to evaluate three of those projects. They evaluated them both for similarity and in terms of what was the original budget cost for the project, and what did that project come in at? So what was the difference there? Were the firms coming in under cost, were they coming in above cost, were they coming in where they needed to be? Same thing for timeline. You know, we've talked about not only is cost important here, timeline's important as well on this project. We know we're in the crunch, you know, on an active campus, we know we got to get things done. So the timeline, how long did each of these companies say they were going to take to complete these projects versus how long it actually took them to complete them? So the committee evaluated and assigned a point value for these important metrics related to project experience. Also, and most importantly, the key personnel, who's going to be, who's going to be working on this project? Each company, as part of this qualification packet, had to provide a sworn statement identifying the key personnel that was going to serve on this project. The committee evaluated this based on the roles that each of these individuals would be serving, the, each of their resumes, which included, you know, how long have they been doing it, what kind of projects have they worked on? And lastly, each firm gave us a little bit of an insight on how they would handle the Old Franklin High School project based on the information that was available for the request, made available in the request for qualifications. So once each of these companies were assigned a point value, each of these three companies, there was a high score and a low score. Carol Daniel was the high scorer in this process of granting these firms. But the next order of business, this selection committee wanted to interview each of these firms that had submitted a request for qualifications. So these firms were interviewed on March 11th by the selection committee. This was a great exercise where each of the firms came, they gave a detailed presentation and allowed members of the selection committee to ask them detailed questions about this project, about their timeline for this project, how they felt this project, things we could do to make this project better, and just to get that impression that you want to interview, the impression you want to get, why you conduct interviews to begin with. You want to have a face-to-face meeting with each of these, again, because this is such an important project, and I think, I'm going to speak for the selection committee, but of course, they wanted their recommendation to be the best of those firms for this project. And so once the interview process concluded, Carol Daniel, again, stood out in the interview process and gave that selection committee a real level of comfort based on their project experience, based on their project history, and those experienced individuals in their firm, that they would be the ones to handle this project. And that is who the liaison committee will be recommending here tonight. The next steps, once we have, we will now begin contract negotiations with this construction manager at risk, Carol Daniel, and we will then be bringing the board, this board, to approve on March 25th, a contract for pre-construction services. Going back to the construction manager at risk process, how that process works
...drag on, I don't want to talk, they sit up there. Um, you know, um, the elements that have been paid for, um, they may come in and bid up, two hundred thousand dollars. And if somebody really wants it, they can come in and make that bid and see what things they want for us like that. They doesn't have to go in front of anybody. You can go in wherever, I mean, if anybody, if anybody listening has an interest in that property, then they're welcome to have a set up for a million dollars.
He said that one minute.
And totally up to the board, if this board has better plans or ideas for that, then certainly now we're doing the time off of the end of the year.
I read this agreement correctly, you have to raise the bid by a minimum of ten percent for the first one thousand dollars, five percent for the next, for the statute, correct?
Yeah, so it's a funny math problem, but it's nicely, basically right.
His motion was to approve the offer in the amount of two thousand nine hundred.
It started out today.
Will they, will they have to accept that in half? Just a breakdown there?
Yes. Building values at up to thirty-six thousand Uptown, land values at up to sixty-six thousand seven hundred.
A property like that is huge by the community. There's also a, a threesome, I feel that, that we haven't had any public input on releasing the community property like that. I think, uh, I think we should have a public hearing on releasing that property before we just give away, or not give away, but sell a property that, if the community is affected with that, except by no means itself. So I think, I think moving forward with, you made a motion.
How do we, how do we acquire the property?
We acquired the property, it had been turned over to the Macon County Historical Preservation Society, and that was down, um, for my control and find out this place. That's been, just kind of dissolved, and so it had been sitting out there, owned by this entity that, that place was dissolved. And so contacted members of, that were last members of that society, and they kind of had a devoted, you know, meeting, um, for one executive corporation, and agreed to convey it back to the county, the legislature, the version called in that deed, um, and so that's how that deed got signed and given back.
So, uh, probably, uh...
Well, it will die, and that's somebody's gonna try to revive it within seconds.
Time to close, but it doesn't matter.
Right.
Then, um, when that happens?
I'd like to make the motion, Mr. Chairman, that, uh...
Well, so that one, I guess we first have to announce that the motion, that Mr. Hickman's motion died for lack of a second, and then that's died in the, then we have the county mayor.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion, we, uh, have a public hearing on, uh, the kinds of school property, uh, to get the public input before we go with the contract.
Now, and with, that's where we're going, I would, for purposes of efficiency, I'd say let's schedule that public hearing before the next county meeting in April, so that we don't have to call feedback, or we don't have to pay me to end the second meeting.
It's an easy way out for us, and I look my book, be a big sign pusher on the property, and have a person play with it, and whoever's brought on, they'll see, and know, to hate somebody down, and then sell it off and run it.
And then, just for clarification, the plan would be, since I would be in charge of noting that, I do have email, um, from the neighbors that we exchanged equipment, and I would most certainly let them know, obviously, because I'd be trying to get something to do, keep up with that bid. But, when, of course, that was before, we can still do that, even after we have a public hearing on that. So we can certainly notice this for, have a full public hearing before the April meeting about this.
Okay, will you include that in the, uh, the continuance of this meeting? You're saying that's the April meeting, though?
I'm just saying that notice it for the April meeting.
Yeah, notice it for the April meeting.
Not, not the twenty-fifth.
Right.
Not the twenty-fifth, the twenty-fifth is already being noticed for building, in the newspaper tomorrow, that, when you approved this morning, actually got sent to the paper on Friday in order to make that happen, um, in time, because that one required a ten-day notice. Um, we go ahead and announce today, in opening the meeting, that that is going to be a public hearing, today the meeting will cover. So we've got the sale tax referendum, and I believe that is in your packet, this is, um, similar, or not identical, to the referendum we had a year and a half ago, um, so this would be a resolution calling for a special advisory referendum for the levy of a one-quarter cent to county sales and use tax, um, that would be voted upon if you have been their election, if the board so approved, we will commit that to the Board of Elections for inclusion on that. We gotta have a, for, for, for this either, we gotta have a verbal one second.
Well, Chairman, as I told you earlier today, if there is something to fairness, uh, it's, uh, 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 and also stated that we are willing for people to increase that, uh, sales tax on quarters and on the main, so the, uh, the people of county has an option for approval or not approval, again.
That's a thing that hands on people, um, you don't have much here, maybe, and you're sitting up in the system, you know, to surround your families in the kind of fashion that else exists, because it would sense for us, you know, acting to help them, to be here and have to drive us, and stuff.
Glad to have Mr. Stall with us here tonight, and he could be up to come and talk about it, uh, talk with us about the approval to exempt requests for proposals for engineering services below fifty thousand, for geotechnical engineering services for hydrogeologic design and update, to the environmental monitoring plan for the future phase three sale two of the Macon County landfill, that is the longest sentence that I think I've ever read.
And while you're catching your breath, uh, as I was reviewing this today, and I apologize for not being here during the beginning of the day, saying the agenda, if it would be possible to flip I and H, it'll just make more sense then.
Just, uh, consensus, so...
Is there my clue with me going with the second or third?
Yeah, go to I first, and then H.
Again, apologize, I didn't make that early. Um, I already switched mine. Um, so, the second item, I won't make you agree, uh, basically, um, what I have, what I have put in your package, and basically this is just, uh, for okaying, I don't know that it takes a formal action for, um, the process by which we will select, uh, engineering services for the construction of the next landfill sale, um, and, uh, for reasons that I think I've talked about before, so unless I haven't, or if you have a question, I'll, I'll, I'll explain, um, wanting to roll the closure of the old landfill into this project, um, and there's some, there's a very definite reason why, why I want to make that a dual project, um, but basically, all, all I'm asking for tonight is that, is to approve the process by which we will select a, an engineer, an engineering consultant firm to, uh, perform the engineering services in the attached, yes, does that make sense?
Yes.
And basically, so I don't have to go through that process, so much exactly what Derek has described, except it's within his engineering services and such destructions, everything. But other than that, you can say beautiful, that's exactly what we're going to do. Uh, go through an RFQ process, there will be a committee review, uh, and grade out the respondents, um, and then I will bring the committee's recommendation back to the board to request approval to enter into a contract with said firm, uh, so pretty much...
Who's on that committee?
Historically, it's me, Lori, Lindsay, and Derek. I, I, I don't know if it's, I don't know if that treaty's settled as far as the others are going to go.
I'm not, I'm not professional, I'm afraid of this.
I mean, yeah, I, I don't, I don't think we named the board, that's just historically the way it is, but if, if you, uh, if anybody wants to be a part of that, I think, for Derek and Lori, we'll, we'll let, let you know what happens.
I don't have any more.
Well, I don't have any trouble, I'll make a motion, that we, uh, suggest an RFQ for the engineering services. Department of Macon County Landfill Place Three, Cell Two, the closure of Macon County Landfill Place is going to...
First motion, so second, 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 we're grand bond, any further discussion?
If you want to, I mean, I, I don't, I don't know if you were kidding, or just, really curious.
I'd love to, John.
Well, we'd be happy to have any of you, if you want to help evacuate, because my father, I don't mean, I'm the father's first, I'm the first, so, yeah, we welcome any other input.
Well, like I said, if, if you remember, and Derek had what you said was written down after you was going to the head, but, all the things he was saying about their criteria, pretty much exactly the same criteria.
Maybe in school?
Yeah, experience, similar projects. Okay, well, I hope, have you took it in? We're going back to H now. So, what H is, uh, is the, um, approval of res- of resolution exempting, uh, engineering services, amount of other thousand dollars from the RFQ process, um, and basically, this is, this is kind of a kickoff piece to what will become these projects, um, the development of the landfill, briefly, you know, you set your boundaries by what setbacks you have to have, from neighbors, waterways, bike parks, whatever, uh, but then you also have to set it horizontally, how deep you can go, and then how high it's kind of set by the, our boundary, but we have to, we have to know how deep we can go. So in order to, uh, hit the ground running with this project, after we get through that process, um, and I'll, again, I'll return briefly to why I say hit, hit the ground running. This, the hydro work has to happen in front of that process, because that is what the bottom contour of the landfill, that this process, uh, they have to know what the bottom's gonna look like, to develop into the construction documents and the permanent document. Uh, so, this is for services to perform at the hydro, uh, so DHR and, uh, hydrolog- hydrologic investigation, uh, report, which, I should, that will be used by the engineers to develop the bottom of the new landfill.
Even the meat potatoes, I mean, why do we need to invent what RFQ?
Just, okay, so I, I said I would, and I did, circling back to the timeline, uh, the faster we can start this process, the better we want to be on the back end. We have a tight schedule to build, uh, as you know, we're, we're running out of space in cell, phase three, cell one, uh, our vertical expansion, been going on, is in the hands of the state, awaiting for approval, uh, but that still puts us at about three years, um, plus minus, um, and so the, the timeline for this project, um, is, is too plushy, uh, and that's counting on the state being responsive, and getting our, getting our approval back to us at the time. Uh, so, it's a tight window, and the only way we can get started and hit the ground running in July, with what will be meat of getting the permanent, is to have this information collected and ready for the engineers, like, all of you, like, does that make sense? No, this is, the VLE, the Neil Lemmons, is, is on the hydro. So, yeah, so y'all are, are cool, and will, whatever, Lori says.
Yeah, the grant exemption, about nothing that goes with it, so it's a fundamental category by statute, you can't exempt it from the RFQ process. I believe you put the resolution in there, didn't you, Greg?
I did.
The motion gave to approve the resolution, exempting RFQ for engineering services for, uh, the geotechnical, hydrologic design and updates, environmental monitoring plans, the people's base for yourself, and...
Be illegal, yes.
And, and, and we just, I mean, we were here or there with this future process, but these steps leading up to this were all performed, uh, so they're ahead of the game, and they're probably the only ones that could get done, to what they do. Uh, the other piece about, what's important to the timeline, and why I tied the closure of phase one, phase one, phases one and two, I'm hoping, I don't always get what I want, but I'm hoping to time this so that we move, we get our vertical expansions, and move back to phase two, go through, as we're going through this process, then move back to phase three, um, and finish building that landfill during the, and by that time be ready to start construction on phase three, cell two, and take that dirt directly from where we need it gone from, and deliver it where we need to go to, instead of having to pay to move two hundred thousand yards of dirt twice. That's, that's the point in merging those two, if I can make the timeline.
Okay, uh, the last item, uh, and then I said, um, this is, this is kind of the culmination of some, some things the department has, that have changed its board over the last couple of years, um, our ordinance says that the county commissioners will, will basically register, permit, approve, uh, anybody that's gonna be hauling trash for, uh, trash rye. Uh, we've never had a program to register, uh, these companies, because historically, we had one company that we recognized, which was our franchisee, their rules and regulations were spelled out the franchise, so there was kind of nothing, there was no reason to, to do this. At the last extension of the franchise, the, the franchise, and Eric, if you can say this better than me, uh, the franchise was, was limited to subscription service, but an on, an on-demand request for a can, uh, at a construction site, or cleanup, or whatever, was no longer part of the exclusive franchise. Since then, we've had a couple dozen at least, and it seems like I see a new trailer coming in pretty regularly. Um, so that's, that's led me to go get back into the ordinance and what it says, and I think we need to develop a program that we, that the ordinance says we're gonna have. Um, I don't know if anybody's had a chance to look at this, I, I just wanted to get this in front of you, uh, I have written, uh, sort of the, well, the program, the application process, that a company would go through to become registered in accounting, um, I have not, um, I have not delved into, well, operationally, administratively, I don't think it's a heavy lift, I'm not concerned by that, but any punitive pieces of this, uh, I just haven't gone there, because I wanted feedback from you gentlemen, uh, before I brought you something that you didn't see.
What's, what's the real issue here? They, they tell me dump trash, they pay the bill.
That's not, no, the, the issue is honestly about protecting citizens, I mean, that's why people regulate traffic. John, six months ago, you had a construction crew that came down the road, dumped it on the side of the road. Well, if we have, if we have people registered, and that is a registered hauler, um, that makes us easier, it makes it easier, easier for us to track it down, it also makes it easier for us to hold them accountable, because right now, we have no mechanism to hold them accountable. But, depending on the punitive piece that gets built into this, and I've, I've asked Eric to, to look at, you know, what statutory authority we have, and how this can be implemented. Um, but, that's one piece of it. Another piece is just making sure these people have our license to do business in North Carolina, have insurance, if somebody comes and drops a can, and crushes your car, or pared down your fence, it's Johnny, Johnny trailer, you know, and that, and that person doesn't have any insurance, that's gonna impact, because I don't want to stop anybody from hauling trash, uh, in the manner that I've discussed, just matter of having a county of those people, uh, so that the citizens, I mean, you don't, you don't have to hire somebody, I mean, you don't necessarily have to hire somebody that, that has been registered, although, whole product's not important, unless you do hire somebody, but that means we bet if they at least have insurance, if they've got multiple employees, they have work with time, they have their license to do business in North Carolina, uh, and we've got them on our radar, I'm, I'm inspecting their equipment, if they've got, if they're just pulling a trailer, does it have a functioning car, does it have holes in the side, you know, just, I mean, just, just basic stuff, so that we're not getting windblown later from people pulling a car trailer, uh, we're not getting people illegally dumping, and not, not having inhabitants to, uh, to enforce anything punitive against those people, uh, that's, I mean, that, and, basically, I'm kind of still what the ordinance says, uh, to make the handle of this. Um, the ordinance, um, I think I, I think I listed some pertinent sections, uh, so if you want to check and see where I'm coming from, but like I said, all I want to do right now is, is just get this out there for you, uh, actual leisure, feel free to reach back out to me with comments, concerns, uh, and that's, that's where it'll be, it's still...
Do other counties have ordinance, like, to promote?
Yes, most counties, most, most counties do want their, do want licensed haulers, they do track their haulers, uh, and again, it's just for, it's just for all the things that, it's to kind of give you some control over all the things that can go back. I mean, you know, if, if, if I go and pick up your trash, and I charge you, uh, what would I charge, a hundred bucks per second can, and a hundred fifty dollars for tending tipping fees, and I go and dump it in a hauler somewhere, I got three hundred fifty bucks, and can just got a mess, so, it's, it's, it's really just a matter of keeping track and holding people accountable. If somebody brings something intimate that is a banned material, or hazardous material, I need to be able to hold that, I need to be able to hold that hauler locked, so I need an accounting, I need a rec, a record of who was bringing this stuff. And, like I said, even as simple as, do you have a car? When you come in here, is your load car, or have you been littering all the way from wherever you came? Uh, so it's, it's just a mechanism to do a lot of the things that we already kind of do, but put an actual procedure to them, uh, as anticipated in the ordinance.
It just only depends, get the dump truck, or... So it does not apply to dump trucks, to dump trailers?
No, no, I'm sorry, anything that can haul, like, there's, there's some parts in here where I talk about, it should be, um, whether this is just for people for hire, or if it's for people who are bringing their own. Uh, if you bring a chip truck in... If you bring a chip truck in, it's your stuff on your truck, and you have to have it locked.
Really, in my mind, there's a lot of them that don't, don't have license or insurance every day. A lot of drivers, you know.
Well, like I said, that's.
I feel like that's why we have to be a TVV.
Well, I've said that a million times. No, I've said that a million times, the same thing with regard to littering, because that's their, that's them and not us. I'm not doing an inspection on it. All I want to know is, can you cover it? Does it have holes? And are you, are you on my list? That's really all I care about. Because if you're on my list, and you have insurance, you have a business license, you are, you know, you are good to do business in Main County. But that's protection to the customers and a role of knowing that these people, for lack of anything else, because these people are all on level, frankly. But yes, one of the things that I am still on the fence about and am looking for feedback is if you're hauling your own, in some ways, I think, well, maybe not, but in some ways, I think, yeah, we should probably look at them too, if they're showing up, or if they're showing up with their own stuff. But it gets into what problems are we trying to, or what problems are we trying to stave off and not.
So, now you have these guys that have their licenses, they're scheduled to go to the landfills, and now they are dumping.
Well, no, I'm not checking, I'm going to check them quick.
It's okay, I'm here to see just doing this. It's your check of the law, so we're dealing with.
Yeah, I mean, we're doing that anyway.
Yeah.
It's just now, it gives me a mechanism to, instead of saying, you know, take this bag or call these people and get this, this is what should happen with this material, but it can't come here, and they just go and put it in a bigger bag and tie it off better and hide it better, but it gives me an actual mechanism to potentially have a punitive cost that I can apply to that company to pay for proper disposal when that shows back up, and I haul, I have this place coming to me.
Well, I mean, even with the particular work that you've seen now, Chris, you have license vehicle information, waste hauler registration application, which is asking for tax ID number, number of fleet, and you're saying here that you want to know all the insurance information from these vehicles, I mean, it just.
I just want to know that you have liability insurance.
Well, I mean, if that was the case, we could solve the problem with the border. If we were magical and we could do that, I mean, we can't do it. And I'm going to tell you something else. I followed a truck, the county's haulers from Highlands all the way to Franklin. I videoed it. Thirty-eight pieces of trash blew out of that trailer. So, we got an issue, just because you cover this trailer or this truck does not mean that trash is not going to blow out of there. And so, to me, this is absolutely nothing more than governmental breach. That's, that's simple. Your job is to take trash in and dispose of that trash in the landfill. In my mind, you're not out here to inspect people's vehicles and whether they got driver's license and insurance and everything else, because I look at the sheriff's department stuff, and I see all these people that have been arrested for no driver's license. Well, that, you cannot do apples to apples here, and as Commissioner Young always says, we can't, we got to call spade to spade. And so, to me, if you're going, only the people that's law-abiding abide by this stuff. And so, to me, this is penalizing some new companies that have come in here that isn't hauling stuff, and we need a strong private sector. And so, therefore, this is, to my mind, is nothing more than governmental breach.
Well, with all due respect, my job is to enforce the ordinance of making accounting, and that is, an ordinance says we will have to. It's not going to break my heart if we don't, but the ordinance says we do, and I think there are some protections that are due to our citizens and some potential problems that this would solve. I don't care, I don't care if you have a driver's license. I go and see that you don't have holes, and you have a tarp, and you have a tax ID, so you're legal to do business in North Carolina, I'm going to put a sticker on you, and that's end of it until the next year, and all I'm looking for then, that you still have a tarp because there's still not holes.
Okay, so the ones that don't have a tax ID and everything else, where are they going to put their garbage? If you, if you restrict them to the point that they cannot come in and do business in the landfill.
I'm not saying they can't do this. Again, I know you kind of tend to congregate, but one thing, we also have an ordinance that says if waste is generated in Main County, it is to come to Main County landfill. So, I'm not, when I talk about punitive, I'm not talking about denying anybody access to the landfill. What I'm talking about is a citizen that needs this service can make the decision, do I want somebody that the county has vetted and said is, has at least promised to the county that they're going to do it the right way or not? And if not, you can still use them. If they carry your mess up, it's just going to be a lawsuit because they may not have any insurance. But I don't, I don't care if they do it. I'm just telling you, we say we're going to, we're going to provide some protection to the citizen. We don't say we're going to keep anybody from doing this.
Have any, has any citizens that make the county contacted you and said you, they were concerned about who was hauling their garbage out of the property?
Once again, Don, I'm going, I'm bringing you something the ordinance says we will do.
Well, and that's, that's good.
That's it.
To review the ordinance and make adjustments to the ordinance or whatever the case may be.
That's fine.
I mean, we're still having issues with illegal dump sites and everything else already. I can't imagine what will happen, so.
Who reviews the order? Who reviews that?
I don't know who else.
Is the plan board, or if it's reviewed?
I don't know.
Do you have a plan board?
I guess, I guess what I see here is, maybe you're presenting a business model that's a, you're going to be hired, you know, you want to have it. I think the area that your shirt is going is people that don't take the ground, you know, people that, people out there that come, that are allowed to perform any protection, like you're not going to get a party.
Well, and they, they have an unfair advantage, you know, like all the others. Like I said, I'm not saying Company A that did, does, and Company B that don't. I don't care that they both exist, but the citizen has a right to know.
I agree.
I think they both have an authority.
Anyway, like I said, it's in your court. If you ever want to hear back again, don't come back to us anytime soon. It's bound to be.
You got to look at what you're talking about. To discuss what plan board is, you just have a broader rate of community members at large that, men, women, of all ages and all, they take this on and get it.
I would recommend, I haven't, haven't got a preview, but I'm bogged down right now. So, while I'm behind you, let me, I mean, let me, I haven't reviewed any of this, so then, it was sent to me, I haven't yet. So, let me give a brief, look at that, or look at our ordinance, then look at this, and then I'll come back to you and say, within it, let's go, decide that one, how about that?
In the, the, we did my presentation.
Yeah. There's one that's due, and one that's left.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you, Howard.
Thanks, Chris. Appreciate you dropping the, this thing down. On the floor, the president member, they don't vote for, uh, Joe Allen, to accept the president member.
Don't move here.
Let me find my, let me find my documentation. It's a little messed up over here.
You get some money?
I don't have any, but I got mine. Oh, he's got my paperwork on me. I do that, but then, I want to do it, but it's absolute. Mr. Chairman, as the liaison to the Economic Development Commission and the Highland Squares Development Commission, we have three seats available on the development board, and the mayor from Town Franklin has sent a recommendation that we approved Stacy, Stacy Guffey for Town Franklin, and the mayor, Ted Taylor, from Highlands, has asked that we appoint Brian Steeler, and the Chamber of Commerce in Highlands has asked that we appoint, for the recommendation is taken. So, and just to give you an update, Stacy Guffey is the vice mayor of Franklin, Brian Steeler is the Highlands commissioner, and Kaden Kent is the Highlands DC director in the State Department. And I made a motion that we approve those positions and recommendations on those three.
Motion, you have anything?
You got it.
In the first discussion. Your vote.
I'm going to have Paul Paul come on here and get out of here. We're going to have a fun session.
Yes.
You ready?
Yes. Ball beat, spin. Brief.
Motion, your interest, thank, fun session.
Okay, so that's going to be under 143, desk 318.11A. Oh, four, I was talking about, four, four, um, property, um, economic development.
No.
No?
I shared it with Eric, I didn't share it with you. Berbison, Berbison.
A few minutes later.
I did leave.
I was still here.
You're Tom Stewart, you're the head guy, yeah.
Yeah, well.
You're the head guy.
Well, I was here, so I was staying here.
Yeah, yeah, we got to keep these two in the hall. They're, they're trouble.
Thank you for being here. Thank you. Tim, I have some questions before you get out.
All right, Paul, you don't say it, you're right there.
Motion adjourned.
Uh, we have.
You got to clarify what we mean by position.
Yes.
Coming in closed session.
Okay, so, we ran in closed session for purposes of property acquisition, remember 143, that, 318.11A, property acquisition.
Yep. I'll make a motion with Eric.
Say your job, son. All right. All in favor? I do.
We're out of here. We're out of here, guys.